One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Audience may be seated. Thank you.
Tonight, we have a presentation of the Entertainment Center at Jordan Landing by Dan Milich. Dan?
Mayor and council members, staff and members of the audience this evening. My name is Dan Milich. I'm the Director of Development for Four Square Properties. Happy to be here, as always. Just wanted to give the council a brief update on where we are with the Entertainment Village expansion. On the screen in front of you is an outline of the Entertainment Village in the area of the redevelopment. But this is a good image and kind of reminds us where Jordan Landing all started so many years ago, back in 1997, 1998. Originally, it was 450 acres of land, which extended off this map to the north and the northwest. A lot of the residential property was sold off and not developed by Russell Grove Development at that time, but by others. Rusty did develop some residential land, but obviously, the majority of it is the commercial development that you see on the screen in front of you. What we've done is, in looking at the Entertainment Village, understanding we need to keep up with the times and bring some new life into the center. So, we've gone through an extensive process over the last three years in a design effort that's culminated in us coming into the city with a subdivision plat to re-divide some of the Entertainment Village area, as well as a preliminary site plan approval to actually get the new buildings approved as part of this effort. What I'd like to do now, David, if we might, run a video that shows... It's a different video than I showed the council about a month ago, and we can just sit here and watch this for a second, and then I'll wrap up. This animation was actually done before the video that I showed the council in mid-November. And what I like about this video is, number one, it doesn't have any music or voices to it, so you can just watch it. And it has some still imagery that our architect, AJC Architects at Salt Lake did. These images were what the animator drew from in order to create this animation image. So, this is coming from the parking lot on the other side of Plaza Center Drive, across Plaza Center Drive, heading right for the Cinemark Theater, which you can see the spire in the background for that. That's one of the gateway entry signs that we met with council on a month ago now. And again, there's the still imagery that the architect came up with, and then the animator took over from there and filled in the rest, if you will. Cinemark went through an effort to change out their stadium seating to lounge seating that happened earlier this year, culminated in October. And they also did other interior remodeling to the theater at the tune of about $6 million. The stadium seating was about 5,600 seats, and now they're at 2,300 lounge seats. So, the seating's been reduced significantly. This effort, we're estimating to be in the range of $40 million for the building improvements to the redevelopment area, the hardscape improvements that you're seeing, the landscape Landscape and hardscape improvements alone are probably in the $8 million range. As I mentioned to council, in November, our goal is to be under construction, breaking ground this spring for the first phase of the developments. That'll be the two buildings in front of and adjacent to the front of the Cinemark Theater. As part of that effort, we need to replicate a drainage field that's out in the parking lot that's going to be covered with new buildings. So, there'll be a lot of below-grade work going on that isn't, again, the pretty stuff, but new buildings will be happening soon thereafter. I believe that's the end of the video and the end of my presentation. If anybody has questions on our update and progress, I'd be happy to address those.
Any questions from council? Look forward to seeing it, Dan. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move now to Communications. Anything from...
Nothing from me tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Thank you. I'm pleased to tell you that in the last eight months, Ed Berkovich has just concluded his eighth trial. And again, it was a guilty verdict, a DUI offense, of which a jury returned a verdict in less than an hour. So, I'm pleased to see that Judge Coons' courtroom is being utilized pretty much twice, maybe three times a month with jury trials. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Oka?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Brian Clay?
Just one item, just to let the council, Mayor and council know. We received a grant from the Utah Community Forestry Council to assist in the planning of the new trees that we did on 22 that were vandalized. You should receive that in January. So, it's about $8,000. Thanks.
Bill?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Jim?
Nothing from Public Works. Thank you.
Chief McCallie?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thanks.
Councilmember Anderson?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to wish staff, citizens, and council a Merry Christmas on Saturday and on Sunday. Merry Merry Christmas Eve on Saturday, Merry Merry Christmas on Sunday, and I would like to wish all the BYU fans a happy night tonight. Go Cougars.
Councilmember Nichols?
Just echo what was just said. Nothing further. Thank you.
Councilmember Hagan?
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, there was a town hall meeting held here at City Hall. It had to do with the property on 7800 South and about 3800 West. And we will be holding another one the first Wednesday in January. So, if you missed the last one, we invite you to come back and join with us there. I will be posting some information on my District 2 Facebook page. You're welcome to look at that. Also, last week, I had the opportunity to take in two different scout units on tours of City Hall. So, just keep in mind, scouts, if you'd like a tour of City Hall, I would be happy to accommodate that. In addition to wishing you Merry Christmas on Sunday and a Merry Christmas Eve on Saturday, I could wish you a Merry Christmas, Adam, on Friday. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Only item tonight would be a thank you to city staff who've been out there taking care of our streets and getting those snowplows out there. It's very nice to see the change that we've had for the last couple of years now where we get the residential streets, as well as the collectors and arterials. That's probably one of the things I get commented to about the most. And with that, a preemptive thank you to all the staff from Public Works, Public Safety, who are going to be out there over the holidays away from their family, so that everybody else can get where they're going to to enjoy the festivities. So, thank you very much. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you. I have one small thing I wanted to mention, an interesting... Because we go about our day-to-day lives and our workplaces outside of city halls since we're not here full-time. We occasionally run into colleagues who happen to be residents. And I had that happen this week, a little bit unique. He's not a resident, but he drives through West Jordan every day on his way home. What happened was, he was pulled over by a West Jordan City Police Officer, and he wasn't sure what had happened. And then the officer announced to him that his headlight, one of them, was out. And he apologized he wasn't aware, and he thanked him for the information. And thankfully, the officer in his case, he said, "This is a warning. Take care of it." The story is very effective at this point. He proceeded to drive another 10 blocks and was pulled over by another West Jordan police officer for having a headlight out. And I just wanted to thank our police officers for being so attentive to the little details that make a difference. I know to those who might... It's an annoyance for something as small as a headlight, but public safety is so important in getting the message out, people are... The officers are on the street, and that they're watching. It's an important message to send. And I just wanted to thank the police department. I mean, in this case, he actually was very grateful. He came back, and he thought he was going to end up with a ticket that he owed the city. He fixed it the next morning. And he was just very grateful that the city was, I guess, forgiving to some degree, but also, they understood his situation. But I want to thank the police department for just being aware. That is just great. It's great to hear that's happening.
Thank you. I'll hold my remarks till the end of the meeting. We will now move to citizens' comments. I have two signed up to speak this evening. As a reminder, you're allowed three minutes on the topic of your choice. Stephen Jones?
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Steve Jones. I live at 3234 West, 6920 South. Tonight, you're going to talk about business item 9A, which is a reduction of impact fees for the presentation that we just saw for the transportation side. Going through the packet, I'm... I don't know... I don't know how they come up with some of these things sometimes, because the reality check says that it's not correct. First of all, I looked through their numbers, and on one of the final pages for the independent road impact analysis, it shows an adjustment factor, but there's no explanation of the adjustment factor. I guess the biggest problem I have with what's being presented is that the reduction in seats from the movie theater, I think, have a higher significance in lowering the cost or the traffic load. And I don't think it has that big of an impact, but adding the square footage that they're going to be adding is going to add a significant amount of traffic up there. And I can tell you already that I can think of three places right now that I could take those impact fees and alleviate just making left-hand turns into and around the movie theaters. Another thing that kind of jumps out at me is the fact that the analysis takes its heavy weight, but yet, they've already just got done telling us that the seating has already been taken care of. So, to me, that should have zero weight into whether the impact fees for the addition of the square footage is involved, if that makes sense. So, I would... It's probably a better analysis is to throw the seating for the theater out, in other words, treat it as a zero effect. And I think the 34% reduction is too low. You know, I'm not against them doing their remodeling. It's good for the city. It's good all around. But that road right now has a tremendous amount of traffic on it as it sits without adding another 700% square footage to what's being happened up there. So, I would ask that the city council not reduce its impact fees, and I would suggest they take those impact fees and use them for the left-hand turning that does not exist right now very adequately and use it for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Smith?
My name is Matthew Smith, and I live at 6676 Westbrook Maple Way. I would like to address item 7 because it is not in the public hearing. I encourage you to deny this appeal because this area of land should remain commercial. When Jordan Hills Villages was first proposed, there was controversy because it was so far away from other development. The Planning Commission and City Council only approved this leapfrog development because of the amenities promised, including a commercial area for this neighborhood. Without the commercial area, the whole project, the planned community of the Oaks, Maples, and Sigmores would never have been approved. The applicant's reasons for requesting a change are not sufficient for this appeal. One reason given at the Planning Commission meeting was that all efforts to develop commercially have been exhausted. A landowner's efforts to sell shouldn't be a factor in land use decisions, and if it is, that sets a dangerous precedent. The letter marked 7A states that grocers were approached to develop here, but it looks like that happened before the recession of 2008. A lot has happened since then, especially very recently, that might cause more interest in this site. This year, I've seen plans go to the Planning Commission for all areas surrounding the site. Even the Jensen property is coming before the Planning Commission at their next meeting. There is incredible growth going on in western West Jordan. The letter states that the Mountain View Corridor completion, 5600 West completion, and the Smiths as being the items that eventually killed the site. I have a general land use map from 2004 and a west-side master plan map from 2006 that both show the location of 5600 West and the Mountain View Corridor with commercial at that location and at the parcel under review. We have known for a long time about all of these things. The applicant says that it is too close to the Okra Mountains and at a mile and a half way too close to Smiths. Magna and Harriman also border the Okra Mountains and have a population comparable to the western third of West Jordan. Both those cities have two grocery stores closer together than this parcel and the Smiths marketplace. There are also five grocery stores in the Salt Lake Valley closer to the Wasatch Mountains than this parcel is to the Okers. Residential development here is not consistent with the general plan. The plan states that commercial notes should be at intersections of arterial roads. There are a lot of other places to put high-density housing, but not any other major intersection in the neighborhood to put neighborhood commercial, not destination commercial. This is also not providing for the long-term commercial growth of the city as stated in the general plan. This is not compatible with the neighborhood. The Serengeti Springs apartment serves as a buffer between lower-density residential and commercial. It makes no sense to make it a buffer between low-density and high-density single-family homes. When I bought my home 13 years ago in the Maples, I looked at the maps and decided that this would be a nice place to buy a home. There was supposed to be an elementary school, a high school, a regional park, a lot of open space, and a lot of that is now gone. Please don't shrink this commercial area. This change would make the area less nice and less walkable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council and citizens' comments? Now would be the time. Please state your name and address.
Thank you, Mayor. David Pack, 8264 Sunny Vista Lane. Honorable Mayor, City Council, happy holidays. And I just wanted to thank you for such a thorough and respectful vetting process regarding the appointment of District 4 council member a few weeks ago, especially with questions regarding how the city could be bettered. I feel for our awesome city staff who endured three and a half hours of sitting there listening to all of the respondents. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank them for their hard work and for everything the city staff does for us as residents, for us to enjoy a great city, thanks to their dedication and expertise and professionalism and friendliness. And especially with multiple news outlets contacting me personally regarding the coin flip process, presumably to get a juicy tidbit of asking me, "Whoa, were you disgruntled, or how mad were you?" I simply tonight wanted to reaffirm what I told all of them, that I thought it was a most fair, open, and honest way of resolving a 3-3 deadlock vote that would bring the community together, bring the city council together, and resolve the issue quickly. I wish Councilmember Anderson the very best. In fact, we were together two days later at a BYU Romney Institute of Public Management Board, annual board meetings, and it was the talk of the whole day because it was a bunch of public people. And wow, what did you think about the coin flip? So, both of us were telling people and enjoying a good laugh together. I simply felt it was my duty to step up and apply to help our city. I thought it was wonderful to see 11 applicants turn out. So, it's nice to see people caring about our wonderful city. And I'm perfectly happy continuing to serve at your will and pleasure on the Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment, having a good time there, hopefully making your job easier. And lastly, since we did have a pledge of allegiance that mentions "One Nation Under God," I don't believe that it's inappropriate to mention that I believe that God is even in the coin flips. That coin flip determines the trajectory of Councilmember Anderson's life and how it affects his family, my life and my family as well. I just appreciate your respect through the whole process. So, thank you for all you do for our city. I hope you get a little bit of respite during the holiday season. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? City Norman, I will close the citizens' comments section of the agenda and move to the consent items. I've been asked to pull item 6A, 6D, and 6E. From the consent. D by God and E. Motion would be in order. Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent items B as in Bravo, C, and F.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Jacob and a second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Burton?
McConaughey, I'm not looking.
Oh, sorry. We're close. McConaughey?
I just wanted to quickly comment about 6C, the appointment of Gene Drake to serve as a board member on South Valley Mosquito Abatement. He's done so for a number of years and has been absolutely fantastic. He's one of my neighbors for years, one of the most outgoing, energetic folks, and really goes above and beyond when it comes to mosquito abatement, education for the neighborhood. Could not find a better person for that role. So, I just wanted to, on the record, thank him for his past service and emphatically support his placement and appointment on the board to continue that service. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
Item 7A, an appeal hearing. Appeal of the Planning Commission decision on December 6, 2016, regarding the denial of a preliminary subdivision plat for the cottages at the Oaks of Jordan Hills located at 6841 West, 7800 South. 114 lots on 11.71 acres and one 2.89-acre commercial lot. Urban Chase Property Management, Greg Hughes, and Mark Garza, applicants.
Mayor, may I just interject and share my observations on this particular appeal? May become moot depending on how you proceed on items 8A, B, as they relate directly to the appeal issues related in that particular appeal. You can take a motion under your own rules to table that matter or circle it. It requires a simple motion and a second, and then you can come back to it after you have addressed issues 8A and B. It's just my suggestion that it would seem to flow more naturally. We shared that actually with Ms. Briggs after it was set. I failed to identify that after the agenda was initially prepared, so I apologize.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Based on a comment from Legal, I would move that we postpone this agenda item until after the four public hearings have been completed.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion.
Mayor, there is no need for a discussion. According to the rules... I'm looking at page 27 of your council rules, policies, and procedures. Simply by taking the second motion, it passes.
Okay. We will move to item 8A, public hearing item. Received public input and considered for approval, ordinance 16-53 regarding a general plan land use amendment for 11.71 acres from community commercial to high-density residential, and ordinance 16-55 approving the preliminary development plan with a density of 9.74 units per acre PC zone for the cottages at the Oaks of Jordan Hills located at 6841 West, 7800 South. Urban Chase Development, Greg Hughes and Mark Garza, applicant. Dave Oka?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Staff is here to address this issue. So, I'll turn the time over to Larry Gardner.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The applicants have put together a presentation, and if it's all right with you, it could be more appropriate for them to go through their project if it's okay with the council.
Could you speak up just a little bit? Yeah? If they can't hear you, sorry.
Okay. So, the applicant has put together a project or a presentation, and if it's all right with you, I'd rather have them come up and present their project at this time.
That would be in order.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and your attention to this matter. We... I'm going to... I don't like PowerPoints, but I think that one of the things I need to do is, I think pictures speak a thousand words. So, I'm going to work very hard to show through some slides that I've prepared what it is that I wanted to present for your consideration tonight. What you have here in the red is the area that is zoned for destination retail. Our application is to reduce the retail. It is a down zone. It would reduce the retail from destination to a support retail, but would still support or would still provide for commercial development in this area. This is the... Right here is just the general overview. You see that U-111 is... I have a pointer to them. I'm going to try it out. I like it. So, U-111, 7800 South, and here's the area right here. The next slide... See if I can do this. Just to give some background to this parcel so that you... Just so for some institutional perspective. In 1998, there was a land use plan, and it showed this area here to be the... Right here to be the destination retail. At the time that this was proposed, you had a lot of different developments in this area. And I think, as was mentioned in the comments, and I think it's true, there was a lot of houses, a lot of multifamily even, that was planned for this area. Since that time, some of that multifamily is now single-family homes, more estate homes. Some of that population has diminished, even as some of those plans have. But in 1998, West Jordan looked a little different than it looks today. And you had U-111, as well as 7800 South as major corridors, and the traffic that would be traveling there, that corner, was naturally, and I think intuitively, a hotspot for the kind of destination retail that was contemplated. Fast forward, there are two factors that were good news for the city of West Jordan, but maybe not necessarily for this parcel. One is that 5600 South, at this time, was not connected and didn't allow for residents in the city to commute back and forth. And Mountain View Corridor, while you see it under construction in this site, had not been completed. It's interesting to note that in 1998, Mountain View Corridor was not planned and was not part of that master plan when they were looking to cite destination retail. So, right now, you have... Did I do that right? Let me fast... Okay, so here you have the current zone and the way that it's... The way that it's... I'm looking for my parcel. Where's my parcel? Right here, is it? It's this one right here, right? Okay. So, this right now is area that is still looked to be at destination retail. It's interesting to note, and the council knows better than I do, that part of destination retail requires a lot of parcels and things for people to actually arrive at. On this corner here, recently... On this corner here, recently, this destination retail site has been reduced to a commercial or to a support retail component, which also makes that site less of a destination retail when there's less parcels of its kind that people would actually drive from different parts of the city to arrive and to be able to use. The, the next site, you'll see that 5600 South was connected to 7800 West. You'll see that the Mountain View Corridor has been completed, and those did change the traffic patterns on U-111 as well as 7800 South. What you have now is, and we shaded this, if you live on this side of the Mountain View Corridor, it would be intuitive in the Mountain View Corridor and the areas that there are intersections, and with lots of land that you have zoned for destination retail, for that destination retail to occur, and for those that would live at least in this area of the city to come and utilize that, that, those shopping opportunities. To the west, you have the mountains, the Oprah Mountains, and there are some physical limitations in terms of how much growth and how much you can grow out in terms of rooftops that would take an infill-only type of destination retail and make it viable. So, I wanted to show you something. This is in Sandy. Right here, you have 13th East and you have 106 South. These are two major corridors on the east bench of Salt Lake County, and at the time, a site that's very similar in terms of 12.4 acres, that used to have an anchor, a grocery store here, and there were pads, and there were destination retail opportunities that happened around this area of two busy corridors in Sandy of 13th East and 106 South. Today, that sat vacant for many, many years until it has ultimately been torn down, and you have multifamily that is being marketed for this area now, and more of a support retail that is, that exists there right now. I'm gonna show you, that's 1.89 acres. The proposal in front of you is larger than that in terms of the almost three acres, 1, 2.87 or 2.88 acres for the destination retail on the corner of what we're proposing. But I show you this because this has gone through kind of a evolution, and what I'm asking you to consider is that instead of going to a model that was zoned in 1998, one that had its viability and people utilized infill or 12-acre, 14-acre spots for a grocery center with pads, and seeing retail commercial change and the market change, and seeing those sites now torn down, I think West Jordan has an opportunity to learn from examples like this and look at this parcel in its unique location and get it right the first time. This is what this site looks like right now. Again, there used to be a grocery store and pads here. They've raised all of those structures, and now they are marketing that for residential on that corner. And there is the support retail that is there right now. And again, I want to emphasize that as, and I have a great sympathy for the comments of residents that live in this area that are expecting commercial outlets and retail and an ability to shop or go to dinner. Something like this viable here and even more acreage that would be viable in the proposal that's before you in West Jordan. Another example would be here in West Jordan City itself. This is another 11, 11 acres, 11.59 acres anchored by a grocery store, additional pads that were looked to, to bring people to this area, and today, this area sits empty. There's many of these types of infill destination retail concepts that were very popular in the 70s and 80s and even 90s, but we're looking, and if you look, and this is post-recession, you're looking at a very different type of experience, shopping experience now. You look at the district, you look at different areas. So, there's different spots that you'll see that are taking full advantage of freeway on-ramps and off-ramps, and, and I believe you'll see for now and in perpetuity, if you have land, and West Jordan does, in those areas where you can see multiple parcels connected together, that is where you're going to see the kind of destination retail that's most successful and advantageous to the, to the residents in West Jordan. Let me, can, can you see circles on there? No. Yeah, you could. All right. Maybe I'll look at my on map down here. What I want to show you is this. In those, in those circles, those are your interchanges. Good news for, I mean, have you ever seen a city fight for a freeway off-ramp? I mean, it's where that, I mean, if you look at the off-ramps of every political subdivision along the Wasatch Front, everybody wants to see an off-ramp or an on-ramp that brings the most vehicles, the most population to areas where that city, because of the tax structure we have in our state and the sales tax that cities enjoy, they want their greatest opportunities to be around those intersections. West Jordan enjoys with the Mountain View Corridor three. I can't see the circles, but they're supposed to be up there where you can see where the circles are. It is not also a coincidence that Smith's Marketplace chose an area adjacent to the on-ramp or to the intersection, 5600 West and 7800 South. So, the person that owned this property, it was mentioned, and I think, again, I think I didn't invite Mr. Radden here because if you have citizens that want to tell you that they are really excited and would like to see commercial developed on that parcel, he would join them, and he would argue that he has a greater desire and has been more passionate about trying to find Smith's or a commercial anchor and find a commercial development for this area. To give you some history of Mr. Radden's efforts in trying to see that area develop successfully. In 2006, he began working with Smith's Food Store. In 2007, because Smith's wasn't sure that this area would work, he had bought additional acreage from the proposed Serengeti Apartments. So, he added additional acreage, taking some apartments or potential apartments off of the, off of the, the plan to try and make that, that footprint even larger. So, he bought that, and end of 2007, Smith's opted, looking at the different, in the change in traffic plans and in the market that we're in, it was noted there was a recession at that time, and that certainly, you can't ignore that. But with the change of traffic patterns and with that recession, Smith's opted not to look at that site. But in 2008, Mr. Radden approached the Harman's, 2009 Macy's, and between 2010 and 2016, Walmart Neighborhood Grocery Store, Winko, Reams, Dan's were all approached, and packages were provided to bring and draw that kind of retail activity to that area. I have a letter from Caldwell Banker Commercial. They are your largest in the state of Utah developer of commercial retail. They are people that if you're in a city and you want to see the smartest and best retail destinations, these are the people that I believe do the best job and have by volume most of the development that we see coming online. They identified the three items that changed the future of that site. The connection of 5600 West to 7800 South, the completion, the planning and then completion of the Mountain View Corridor, and then also, Smith's taking those new factors into consideration and citing where they did, near an intersection on 5600 West and 7800 South. Those events changed the, the prospects, as their letter states mightily, for the commercial development of that area. And what I want to say, and I don't want to say it in a rude way, I want to say it in a sympathetic way. If you're, if you yourselves as city leaders and members of the public who live near that site, want, expect retail development to occur there because it's in that proximity of that neighborhood, I am not here to argue that desire, and I don't, but I am here to say that unfortunately, I believe that whether you consider and approve this application before you tonight or not, with the things, with the variables that I've just described, this city's future development, retail development, destination retail will occur on those areas of those intersections and where the most volume and most traffic will occur. And I think that that site and that parcel that has been empty for 16 years will continue to stay empty if all of it has to be like some of the sites that you've seen in Sandy and in West Jordan that have fallen upon hard times and they are looking for new plans on how to develop those areas. So, I, I, I don't argue with the concerns or the hopes. What I would say, and I don't, 100% of nothing is nothing. 17 years, 16 years, you've not seen anything there. If this hybrid, which I'm gonna present, and I'm gonna get into better detail about what it is we're proposing, if this hybrid of single-family homes, not multifamily, not connected walls, but single-family homes, this hybrid in this area were to be successful, that is a great catalyst. And Mr. Radden retains ownership and would like to through this application and how we would divide this parcel, he fully intends to take the acres, which is bigger than the one you saw in Sandy, almost twice as, as large, he wants to see that as commercial development, and he wants and believes that commercial development will finally be viable and very successful in that area. And so, that is not a parcel that I would retain, the current owner of that, the commercial developer, and that's what he does by profession. He doesn't buy land to sit on it and wait. All he wants to do is develop commercial. That is his successful business model, and he believes that with this plan, that that's exactly what we'll be able, he'll be able to do. So, here's the development. You'll see the, the commercial aspect, that's 2.88 acres of commercial. It would, it would accommodate a convenience store, maybe Cafe Rio types and other types of eating establishments. This is admittedly with single-family home, a dense product that you're looking at, but with the apartments, the Serengeti apartments on two sides, with 7800 South and U-111 there, and with the commercial element, I think that this does a great job, and it's true. If you're talking about the different zones and having a higher intensity zone of apartments just around the other side, going to a single-family home and then going to that commercial, it could be called a patchwork of zoning, and that could cause you concern. What I would argue is, that is not going to be apartments, it's not going to be condominiums or townhomes because the city's priorities is that they have single-family homes, that they have homeownership. These homes that we're presenting tonight are not starter homes. The price points are from the high 200,000s to the high 300,000s, and this is a product, and I'll have Dr. Horton come up and maybe describe this a little bit in better, more detail, but this is a product that is incredibly popular for those that are looking to downsize in their lives, maybe their youngest is now on their way to a job or to school, they don't need as big of a yard, would love an HOA to maintain the, the yards. But it is one that in Utah County, which is, the stats show is one of the fastest-growing counties in the United States, it is a product and it is a hybrid of a high density, but a single-family home that is incredibly popular and in, and in high, high demand. I think that this product of single-family homes achieves the goals that West Jordan has, and you have a moratorium for a reason. I came with my first, staff knows this, I came and had the best idea of how you could put the best townhomes you've ever seen along that, along these major corridors. It was shared with me that the priorities of this, of this city is not for townhomes and not for attached. It is for exactly what we've worked to bring you tonight, and that is single-family homes and homeownership. Some other just elevations very quickly, these are the, the lanes, the green is in the, has the open space. We have achieved the required, in fact, we have in excess of the percentage of open space that would be required. Here's some of the elevations of the homes. Now, this, you don't have any decision-making on the inside, but what I want to emphasize to you again is that this is not a starter home product. This is, these are tall ceilings, tall windows, solid countertops. These are homes that, again, we think that there's a strong market for, and you're going to have a very nice product and a very attractive hybrid of a housing development that also finally spurs commercial development in this area of the city, which I think will benefit the residents that surround that area. It'll increase the tax base of the city, and, and really, again, I think it's a unique fit for the, the goals that the city has in terms of its moratorium to attached housing, single-family home priority, and something smart in an area like that where you're not looking like Sandy City might be right now of tearing down its 14-acre, 12-acre infill or destination retail and looking for a new purpose. This is your opportunity to learn from some of those, some of that incubation period that other jurisdictions have gone through and, and get this and hit it over the fence. And I think that's what you have here. I want to thank staff, staff work tirelessly. I, again, I'm very proud of staff recommendations. We come from our pre-application process, we come with what we think is the best idea you've ever seen, and then we're told it's not, and, and then we're told there are issues and concerns around the table. We take copious notes, we work very hard with staff, and we think we work in a collaborative way. I don't do a lot of these projects. I try to do at least one a year, two a year, but I am not a grinder, and I am not here to push bad projects or try to push the envelope in a way that you wouldn't be comfortable. I think what you have here is a culmination of a, of a strong product, something that fits this city's objectives in terms of housing, the type of people that will live and choose West Jordan as their home long-term, as well as finally see a commercial element take off. John from DR Horton's here, if you wanted to just add a little bit on the nature of the home so that you understand the, the quality of the, the product that's being built and maybe why this product is one that appeals to them and why they are such a strong proponent of it.
Mayor, may I just make a quick comment just for the benefit of the record? I realize applicants making this best pitch, there were two references to the city have a moratorium. We do not have a moratorium at the present, we have a temporary land use ordinance that's in place, so I don't want there to be a clarification.
State on the record that I am using vernacular of which I do not appreciate, and I do not mean there's a moratorium.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I was told you can't put multifamily, and I, I chose my words poorly.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is John Linton, I'm with DR Horton Homes. Quick background on, on DR Horton, we're the nation's largest home builder, and we have been for the last 15 years. In Utah, we've been here since 1992, and the last five years, we've been one of the top three largest builders in the state. And I say that because that gives us a breadth and a depth to understand demographics and market trends, and that's what attracted us to this project. We, we want to specifically target the baby boomers. We've noticed a trend throughout the Wasatch Front and frankly, around the country of baby boomers who want to downsize into a home with less landscaping, less time out there, but they don't want to sacrifice the quality of their home, the craftsmanship, and, and this is, this is an ideal situation for us to step into and, and put that, put that product into an area in the valley that I, that we think it would thrive in. We've done this in a few other places in, in Utah County and would be thrilled to, to work in your city.
Are there any questions for me, or is this the point where I sit down and shut up?
Actually, we have a question, so, Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your presentation, Mr. Hughes. It was informative and entertaining, it was great. A couple of questions for you. First, you use the term support retail and destination retail a lot. We don't have those defined in our code. To us, it's commercial. That's what, that's what it says in the code. We, we have big commercial, little commercial, and other commercial, but it's just, it's commercial. Can you, can you define those terms as you understand, maybe like moratorium, right? So that we can make sure we're all on the same page as far as what exactly you're referring to?
Sure, and, and again, so, for me in the developer's mind, destination retail, you have larger parcels, and in today's world, if you look at Big Box and you look at those large development areas that people will get in their car and they'll leave a neighborhood and travel some distance for a myriad of retail opportunities, that would be what I would describe as destination retail, and that usually are larger footprints. Support retail, in my definition, and again, I'm not familiar with the definitions of the city, they are meant specifically for the residents that live adjacent to that area. So, you wouldn't get in your car and drive a great distance in West Jordan to arrive at that spot. It would be one that you would normally, through your normal traffic patterns, stop because it's convenient and take full advantage of. And those are typically smaller in acreage, and so this one that we're presenting is just under three acres, and that would have the convenience store, and that would have the, I mean, in Sandy, it was Beans and Brew, it was a coffee shop, but they, they have related food outlets as well as convenience stores, groceries, things you can buy, but it's really meant for the people that travel on those roads specifically. The, the reason why I've emphasized that destination retail is when you look at something that's 14 acres and looking, you're really looking for something that will have the, the traffic and the, the foot traffic of those that would not just on its normal course along that road or in that immediate vicinity, but would be willing to try. road or in that immediate vicinity, but would be willing to travel a larger distance to get to that spot. And so that's where I think that as 14 acres, that is a challenging prospect for commercial development because there will be larger parcels and are larger parcels around West Jordan where people, uh, will drive to, to have those opportunities. And so that's the difference for me. But I do want to emphasize, because I think it's a good point, commercial would not, uh, disappear from this area. In fact, I think the proposal in front of you tonight will be what is the catalyst to bring commercial, uh, development to that area. And that area frankly needs it. And so I, I, I concur. I think you have to look at, um, the markets, the demands, and look at what will bring that commercial development. And I think a three-acre parcel on the corner with the, with the rooftops and the single-family homes will drive that, uh, that activity that the state, the city's looking for.
Thank you. So, so as a short answer, the size?
Size. Yeah, that's it. You put a nickel in me, you get a buck's worth of speech sometimes. I apologize.
Do you, do you know about what size you would need for destination retail these days? I mean, for example, the Smiths project you referenced on the corner of 56th and 78th is not much larger than this. It's, it's, I think, 16 or 17 acres.
It's a good point. Let me go, let me go back to that spot. It's, it's as much of the individual Smiths spot itself, but also what's adjacent around it. So when you have people that are going to come in and want to bring, uh, and invest and bring in a large retail into your city, they are going to want to, uh, they're going to want to tether, and they're going to want to complement the, the, the Smiths market that's there. You're finding now that what, what's happening is especially with freeways, especially with, uh, the intersections that are now available. I can start to see those circles. Um, uh, especially where you now in West Jordan have freeway with interchanges, you're going to find, and I haven't looked at your zoning, but I'm imagining that you're looking at and citing those areas where those individual parcels are next to each other each way. The parcel I'm talking about tonight actually has experienced something the opposite. So on its kitty corner where there was a larger retail, uh, plan, it has already been reduced to a destination retail, which makes even that 14 acres less viable if, 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 if the concept is the more of those you have together, the more traffic you drive to those locations.
Thank you. And I, I'm going to keep going for a minute if that's all right. Um, you showed us a couple of 14-ish acre sites where the, the retail hasn't panned out, at least not yet, or at least it maybe did for a while and now it isn't, doesn't, uh, because of demographics or whatever, psychographics that change from, from time to time. Uh, I, I think there are several probably though that are about the same size that are thriving. Uh, you can look at, for example, Macy's on 7800 South and 3200 West. You could look at Sandy, right up the street from that one that you pointed out is the Smiths and, uh, used to have a craft store next to it. I don't know what's there now. I haven't been out there in a little bit, but, um, on 13th and, uh, Segalou, there's a, a very similar size, 14, 15 acres, whatever it is.
You're right.
Um, further up in Sandy, there's a Smiths and a ShopCo that anchor a corner on, on 84th. Of course, that has now built across the street with the, uh, the Home Depot and things. Um, but my point is, there's a lot of factors that go into whether or not a business is going to succeed on a 14-acre site, more than just the size of the site. Obviously, the traffic and the things that you mentioned also are going to come into play. And like you mentioned, it's 106th and 13th East, uh, is two major arterial streets, and this is two major arterial streets here. 7800 South may someday go over the mountain into Tuilla. Uh, my friends at the legislature tell me.
It's a good idea.
May, may someday happen. And that may make that a very busy road, and that may, make that a very busy intersection. Um, so the, the point I guess I'm trying to make here is my crystal ball is broken as far as what's going to work on this site and what's not going to work on this site. Um, now or in the future. What I do know though is if we build something on this site now, that's what it's going to be. And it's not going to ever be anything else, most likely, right? Unless we tear it down and build something else, you know, in 15 or 20 years. Um, a couple of questions though about this particular development plan, more so than the land use, uh, component here. If, assuming at face value that this, this letter from the, uh, Columbo Banker is gospel, as it were, and this is, and, and this is true, the large 14-acre commercial won't survive here, and we need to do something else. Uh, why we should do this is not quite resonating with me yet. Um, the, the development plan with the houses laid out the way they are of this very gritty grid style pattern, um, shows, shows me
Let me, let me just remind you that the conceptual plan is not really to be
It is tonight. We're approving the preliminary development plan as part of this item. So normally you'd be right as far as zoning goes, but this one has the preliminary development plan. Um, so just looking at the preliminary development plan, it's looking very square. Uh, planning community zones, as you know, are encouraged to, uh, provide us with a variety or with, uh, imaginative designs, I think is what the code says. Um, this just doesn't look imaginative to me. I've, I've been down to the one in American Fork, uh, that you gave me the address to and looked at it, and it's very crowded. It feels very, uh, dense a, as it is. In my opinion, if you're going to build something, townhomes or apartments make more sense on this corner. And I know we have a cap and grade ordinance that, uh...
Is that what it's called, cap and grade? Is that what I should be saying? Is that M-word I use?
As opposed to a moratorium. Um, that would, you would have to come in under because we have so much high density in the city already. Um, there's just, this one is just not speaking to me so much. I live in a neighborhood that's very similar to this right across the street, so, on, uh, right across 7800 South. Uh, but another question, because I did say this was a question. If this is an HOA, uh, which you mentioned would take care of the, the outdoor spaces and probably the snow removal, things like that, um, would there be a, a provision in that HOA to limit or prohibit rentals? Uh, you mentioned these are not necessarily starter homes, but neighborhoods like this that are this dense do tend to attract a lot of investors that would then rent.
Right. I, to that last question, I would look to D.R. Horton and how they usually put their HOAs together because I'm, I'm unaware of that question. But I do have some comments, if they were questions to some of the things you brought up.
With regard to the rental issue, I think, you know, that there are some cases where we, where you can put that in, in CCNRs and, and call for that. We found in, in practice that whether it's a city ordinance or an HOA, or an HOA ordinance, a lot of times that's ignored. And, and it's hard to control, you know, to just say, you know, no renters here. Yes, we can take steps to, to, uh, to prevent that, but I think, you know, in, in this area, it's, it's a possibility. And I could, I couldn't stand up here in good faith and say, you will never have renters there. Right? I couldn't honestly do that. But I do, I do think that there's a demographic that we'll be targeting of, of a baby boomer that's going to downsize and is going to own it fee simple and not as an investment property. I think you see people tend to do that with, with a townhome or apartments much more frequently than, than with a product like this.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And, and I just wanted to mention that, um, I, there is some uniformity to this. And, and so you're, the, the, the difference that you're talking about or the lack of it, um, I, it's duly noted. I, I will tell you this, that I, I like, in fact, is this was, this product was described to me, um, and maybe your impression was different, but I, I find that the, the product that is in American Fork and the one that's in, um, Cedar Hills, that I think they have, not only am I looking at good homes, nice homes, I think expensive homes, but the demand for those. So they have these plaits. You'll see one of the, um, they have these lanes, and so you see the homes that are laid out. And they have the signs in American Fork, and you probably saw this. And they're just sold, sold. I mean, they, they can't get these, um, the foundations poured as quickly as people are looking for this kind of, uh, of model. And, and you mentioned that maybe this, the best, uh, use for this would be multifamily. Um, but again, in working with the city and listening to the priorities and the objectives of West Jordan City, that was not what I was told is the highest and best use for this. Um, for the, for the Tuilla and, and West Jordan connection, which I think, we look, we have a 2040 plan, the state of Utah does, where we look at, uh, 120 miles of Wasatch Front and 3 million people that will live within the Wasatch Front, 120 miles by the year 2040. We are constantly looking at those corridors and how we're going to even absorb the amount of, uh, people that are going to live in this valley because we have these types of limitations. What I will say about the, the connection there is I think is important. I believe it is on our master plan, but the EIS, the environmental impact study has not even begun.
Oh, sure.
So you're talking about something that it'd be, um, a long time before we would see something like that, not because of lack of merit, but just because of the, the, how long it takes, uh, roads for, you know, for something like this to happen. Uh, the other thing I, I'd invite you to look at is that your planning, again, good news for West Jordan, you have three intersections on a freeway. Um, and I, I would argue that that's not the best news for this respective site we're talking about. But you're going to have an absorption rate. You're going to have a build-out of those three intersections that I think is going to go on for a long, long time, um, wisely so, uh, to the city's advantage, it will go that way. And I think that you're looking at something that, uh, will take, you know, I, I don't want to be held to it because I'm, you know, just like I use words I'm not supposed to, maybe I'm wrong, but you could easily look at the kind of land that's available in this area. And within 20 years, the kind of development that you would see that would tether parcel to parcel and bring people from all around and hopefully even outside of West Jordan with smart development. Um, you will see that activity for those that are in this business and in this world gravitate to those sites for a long, long time. And, um, I think as, as you say, um, as times go on and land becomes finite, and again, I'm not, I, I know that you've heard this before, the argument of, well, maybe multifamily makes the most sense, uh, there will be a pressure as this valley continues to fill on how we fill it. And so I would, I would ask you to consider a smart hybrid, something that supports the city's objective of single-family homes, something that can be a catalyst for commercial development to occur, and, uh, does resist, uh, the, the multifamily, uh, component that I think will continue, uh, to find its way by necessity along the whole Wasatch Front. We're going to see, uh, multifamily, uh, developed more and more, not, not saying here, I'm just saying, along the Wasatch Front, we will see that demand, uh, as the valley continues to fill.
One more question, if I may. I appreciate your patience with me.
No problem.
Is there a phasing plan as part of this? I, I think I saw one at some point, and I, I couldn't find it in the staff report, but there's a phasing plan that goes with this development plan. And if so, uh, which phase is the commercial corner in? If you have that? I don't know if you have that handy.
Well, I, I'm going to look back here. I, I, what we're doing is that my, my group is not retaining the ownership of the commercial. That, that commercial will be aggressively marketed, uh, and will not stop. Um, the, Mr. Raden believes that with this size and with the future development coming, that he now has a parcel that he can see economic development occur. And so that will not be phased and won't have a relation to the, um, the, uh, the homes and the plaits that you have in front of you.
Is somebody walking behind you?
So to answer your question, the residential goes one, two, and then the commercial is labeled as three at this time. However, the commercial has, usually when you phase a project, they need to stand alone, uh, as far as utilities, access and that. So the commercial really could develop at any time if they, they found an appropriate developer. But that's, we're not going to hold them to phase three until the, till the residential's done. If they wanted to come in right after, if this was approved, then that's fine too. So the commercial, but the residential will be developed in two phases.
Okay. Thank you. Um, the current commercial development plan for this corner, or at least what I've seen in, in, I think it's called Little Banker Marketing Materials that they put out 10, 15 years ago. I don't know when it was, but for this corner, when Jordan Hills villages was being built, and this was the, uh, the commercial component for those villages, um, it showed, like you mentioned, a large grocery store and pad sites in front. Looks like what we're, uh, considering here is a removal of the grocery store and some of the pad site, the other, a pad site or two sort of kind of remaining. Um, I, I don't think anybody's thinking that, gosh, you're going to build something that's going to sit vacant. I understand you're arguing about the demand and everything. You wouldn't want to build it if there was no demand, right? So that, that's, uh, understood. My, my, the thing that I'm getting hung up on, on the commercial is the commercial piece that's left. If there was a demand for that, that could have been built under the existing plan as that corner, you know, that pad being built before the grocery store and the other pads were built, um, if that was what's going to fit there. And that hasn't happened either. So I, I just, I, I, I hesitate to buy into the argument that this is going to be the shot the arm that does that when there's been 300, 400 new homes approved in this neighborhood in the last two years. Um, so those are my thoughts. That wasn't really a question. I'll go ahead and turn it over to everybody else. So thank you for entertaining me, ladies and gentlemen.
Other questions from council? I just had a comment. Uh, I personally have worked with Ron Raden at the ICSC show for three years to try and market the entire, uh, parcel to several groups, and we've been unsuccessful. Um, so I believe, uh, a neighborhood commercial will work and be a much better fit.
Any other question? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I apologize for interrupting. Just one more time, I'm over here. Um, the document that was submitted by Mr. Garza did not have a cover letter, so when it was submitted, we didn't know what documentation to attach it to. It was explained to the city attorney's office to attach it to 7A. Under our city ordinances and rules, you cannot introduce additional or new evidence to an appeal. You've referenced it, uh, above in this presentation. May we remove it from 7A and attach it to 8A?
Yes, sir.
Just to make that clear, because when city, city attorney's office received it, and I think I provided to Ms. Briggs' office, it was, uh, attached to 7A. So you will not be considering those documents that are attached to 7A. Yes, Mr. Councilman Haga?
We have this on our, our dais right now in front of each one of us. Is this not, is this the document you're referencing? It says 7A. Just, just for, is this the appeal?
That's for the appeal.
Okay.
That is the item that you should probably just scratch out 7A. You can place in the number 8A now, and you can use it for the reference to this, uh, presentation.
And I won't lie. I went to that planning commission, and I had the same concepts I was trying to convey, but, uh, learned from their vetting and their questions that I needed to do a better job before you in explaining these things. So there are, uh, additional maps and things in terms of preparation, uh, that were born from the planning commission meeting, which were, which were important observations. And so I felt that I needed to, uh, learn from that and, uh, be better prepared when I came before you. So that's, not, not new information, just I'm, I'm attempting to articulate it, uh, in a better way.
And would you also like part of AB?
I will.
I'll leave you to decide on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing for item 8A. If you're here to speak on this item, now would be the chance. Please, for the records, state your name and address.
Matthew Smith, 6676 Westbrook Mapleway. I just wanted to make a, a few clarifications and a few extra comments. Um, this, uh, parcel is zoned as a planned community, but it's not just this parcel that's the planned community. It's the whole, um, Jordan Hills villages. It's the Maples, the Sycamores, and the Oaks. And so this was going to be the central part of this planned community, and without it, we're just a sea of houses. And there's really no plan. Um, I, I wanted to, to address a couple of other things. Um, I've seen plans, uh, that Kennebec wants to develop to the west. It may not happen immediately, but, um, they want to go as far up the mountains as they can. Um, I also keep hearing the words destination retail, and this, uh, everywhere in the city documents, it says community retail or neighborhood retail. Um, and that's what a grocery store is. And I think this community, um, needs it and can support it. And that's what a grocery store is. And I think this community needs it and can support it. Also, there was a mention of the two other interchanges on the Mountain View Corridor, but those are kind of sandwiching the industrial area. It won't be developed as quickly or probably with as, as much commercial as the one on 78th. Because 78th is, is really the only east-west artery that goes all the way straight through West Jordan. U-111 is also a major artery that goes most of the valley up north and south. It, it just makes sense to have a bigger commercial component at this intersection. And I, I just want to stress that, that a lot of amenities in this area have disappeared over the years. That there was going to be an elementary school in the Maples and, and that is gone. There was going to be a high school just south of this. That's now going to be 40 acres of houses. There was going to be that, a large area of open space preserved that was recently put on the market to be sold and, and to put more houses in. And there's, there's supposed to be a regional park north of the Maples. I, I hear that's, that's in question now. So a lot of things have made this not as a desirable of an area. And so I just ask you, please don't shrink this commercial area. A gas station and a strip mall is a lot different than grocery store and restaurants. I want this neighborhood to be a nice and walkable community and this change would make it less nice and less walkable.
Anyone else? CNNO, I will close the public hearing for item 8A and return to the council for discussion and/or motion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Since no one else is hitting a light by yet, I'll give it a shot. Hopefully this comes out right. For the most part, I've been very consistent about making a conscious effort to avoid zoning away commercial or retail. It's something that we know very much that we need. It's something that we've struggled with for quite some time. In this case, I'm, I, I think I may be deviating from that, from that prior course primarily because of what would I have been seeing firsthand. You know, I live right off Sunday South Redwood Road where we have the, the former Albertsons, that, that strip mall that for a number of years did pretty well. But now it's pretty much vacant. We have a number of retailers in there that, that are no longer there. It's similar to, to this property in a number of aspects. But my, my biggest concern is seeing something on, on this kind of mid-size retail acreage that isn't poised to thrive for the long time or for the long term. As, as was discussed earlier during the presentation, development models have changed. During the seventies and eighties, it was primarily focused on, on strip malls where you, where you may have a grocery store and some other retail. But we started seeing in the nineties, we saw Jordan Landing come in. We saw, what we've seen, Jordan Commons, the district up north, they've got Farmington Station. I remember when Cabelas came in. You've got a lot of these places where people are now going out of their way a little bit more to, to see that kind of retail. And that, in my mind, is what I see as destination retail, more of a draw from, from a regional aspect, not so much the, the smaller, the smaller area. A lot of these smaller areas, we've been having issues with. I, I can't count how many meetings we've had to try and discuss what we can do to fix the problems that we have at 70th and Redwood with that facility that, that sits empty. Same thing as was mentioned, 90th South and Redwood. 32 and 78th was shown as a success, but on the opposite side of the street, you had what used to be Southern's and then a thrift shop that's changed hands a couple of times. Pause for two seconds. David, am I okay to share that application information that you shared with me the other day? Okay, thank you. So another one of my concerns is, again, going back to 70th and Redwood, you're looking at these facilities, these strip malls that are built, buildings have a 20, 25 year life. By the time they get to the end of that life, it looks rather rundown and instead of coming in and replacing them, people are going to newer locations, more of the destination type where you have larger names that are going to be more of a draw, you have more people. And it's leaving a lot of these other places empty. What comes into Backville after 15, 20 years are not necessarily the most desirable of places. 70th and Redwood right now, we've got a desert industries that's right there. The 32 and 78th, we have a thrift shop that's right across the street from that, from that Macy's. And I learned earlier this week that the old Office Depot building has a application in for another thrift shop. So in the short term, it, it may seem like something we want, I, I think all of us want to see retail and we want to see something that'll last, something that'll grow and be kind of a staple for the community to fall back on. But the methods of development from 30 years ago are, are causing us problems, a lot of problems right now. And as we're looking at what's been done with Mountain View Corridor, as that's growing, I, that's really where I want to put the focus on trying to expand the retail in those areas. Be, because I, I really don't see too much other potential for, for this particular parcel. The argument was made that, well, if it sits empty for a while, we're not getting anything. Well, I, I really don't care. It's not empty for how many decades. So, so that, that argument doesn't come into play in my mind. But the question is to what would be the best and highest use that we can get out of it? Homes, single-family homes are going to be far better than additional apartments that cause quite a few problems. And then the price point on here was the high 200s to the high 300s. That's also a price point in a product that I'd be more comfortable with. While my preference would be that we see retail or commercial at, at this particular site, I'm so leery of what I see every single day as I drive out of my neighborhood and abandon Rite Aid's, and abandon, or excuse me, and abandon Rite Aid, abandon Albertsons. We've got three or four other shops that are empty right now. I, I don't want to set up for, for that same type of problem three years down the road. So I'm currently leaning in favor of supporting what's been proposed. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
And likewise, you know, the, the economy is very elastic and the one thing that keeps coming to my mind is a comment that Mr. Smith made. That I, I think as a city, we need to be more aggressive in courting commercial development into all these various sectors. And if we're not actively courting economic development, then what we get is housing, which was kind of a comment that's made. And so when I ran for this seat last year and when I interviewed this year to be in this seat, for me, job one is economic development and, and working with the city and developers to bring commercial space in. And I did, I did some checking with, with US Census and Realty Magazine, whatever data they have, as accurate as, as, as they put together. And that the trends are right now, as the economy shifts into smaller lot sizes. Maybe not this small, but, but that's the trend. They're not wanting to maintain yards. Now, that doesn't mean that's universal. It's a, it's a group of the economy. But to Mr. Smith's point, I do, I do think we as a city, and this isn't a reflection on our economic development staff as much as it, as it is what we do as a city to help recruit businesses and help them bring commercial space into our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. As much as we discuss what we like and what we don't like and what we'd rather have and what we wouldn't rather have, we do have a code that we kind of need to, to go by here. And whereas the code is objective, it is also somewhat subjective. Having the sum total of, I think, 90% of the planning commission experience that's now sitting up here on the city council. This is something that I'm, I'm very familiar with, having, having dealt with this for, for a long time. One of the findings, for example, that we need to find to approve a land use map amendment is that the proposed amendment will not adversely impact the neighborhood and community as a whole by significantly altering acceptable land use patterns and requiring larger and more expensive public infrastructure improvements, including but not limited to roads, water, wastewater, public safety facilities that would otherwise be needed without the proposed change. I, I hear this referred to as a down zone, but I, I believe as a, as a traffic producer, this will be a considerably more intense use with 100 and it's on here, 114 lots going into 11 acres. It's a lot of homes, not very, not a very lot of land. Not very much land. There, there are certain findings that the, the planning commission reviewed this and forwarded to us a negative recommendation because the findings are in our code, they felt were not met. Now, I, I, I think if we're going to, to approve something that is, that was forwarded a negative recommendation to us, I think we need to look at their findings as the planning commission who looked at this code and looked at, and made their findings. We need to look at that and say, okay, I see where you came up with that, but you were wrong because of this. Planning commission cited three or four of these, of the findings. There's A through F in the code. And three or four of them are found to be insufficiently met or not met. So, so with that being said, if, if you want to vote to approve this, please show me what they got wrong. Thanks.
Councilmember Haga?
So yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
That would be in order.
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the city council amend the future land use map from community commercial to high-density residential for property located at 2735 West, 7800 South and approve the preliminary development plan for the cottages at the Oaks of Jordan Hills Villages. General location is 6481 West, 7800 South, subject to the conditions of approval of contained in this staff report.
Mr. Mayor, I made a mistake on that address. It's a 2735 78 South is not correct. It is actually, yes, 68, 4, 6481 West, 7800 South.
6841.
So I'll amend that address to, I, would you repeat it back to me? So I can, so instead of 2735 West.
So 6481 West, 7800.
6481 West.
6841 West. 6841. It's on 7A and on 8A on the agenda.
Do I have a motion?
May I also interject? I'm sorry. Does that include in your motion those, that information that was elicited tonight in the presentation as well? As well as comments from the council? If you add that, you include both the presentation that's been presented tonight. The way this reads, it looks like it just is the material you've received and not what you've heard tonight.
I'll accept that one. Can we have a recorder? Repeat what we're going to add to this. In other words, you want to add the presentation?
As well as the comments of the council.
And the comments of the council. To the motion, under advice of Attorney Alan Capel.
I will second for discussion. Do we have a motion by Mayor, excuse me, we have a motion by Councilmember Haga and a second by Mayor Rolfe. Discussion to motion. Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, because that was kind of several interjections, can, can I just have that read back? Okay. Then I can't support a motion, I can't hear.
I would say that possibly Mr. Burke would be able to repeat it back. There were, because there were so, the reason why I say that is there's been so many different items discussed.
But it also could include, I'm looking from the motion recommendation as stated, subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report, comma, as well as the presentations made this evening, December 22, 2016.
Because that's what I put in the motion. And if that's sufficient enough, just the comments that were made by the presentation and the council.
And the presentation.
Right. And that's what I included.
I would like to include that.
Okay.
I suspect the applicant would like that included as well.
So then, Councilmember Jacobs, it would be the motion that was stated in the packet to approve what's presented by the council, excuse me, presented by the staff, and then also including the presentation made by the applicant tonight and the comments made by the council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
I would like to acknowledge the work that the planning commission has done to help us with information in this. Regardless of what the outcome is, the information and the work that the commission does is very beneficial and giving us information to help us understand what is going on and how it's going on. So if for some reason we see this differently than the commission does, please, the commission understands, we recognize the work you did, we appreciate the work you did, and it's helpful to us. So thank you for what happened.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I would echo what Councilmember Burton said regarding the work of the planning commission. Given the, the direction that had been provided to them and the framework within which they were viewing this, I would have expected that, that negative recommendation to come forward. I, I think we're looking at this as, from a little bit different perspective as a city council. So I don't want to, if the vote is favorable, I don't want this to be seen as a slight against the planning commission. I think they did exactly what they were supposed to do and showed the, the benefit, the reason for having multiple bodies review the different applications that come in. And I can't say it any better than Councilmember Burton already did. So thank you to the planning commission for their work.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few comments. And I'll try to be as concise as I can. There were a lot of comments tonight made, both by the applicants as well as we heard some comments from Mr. Smith. I just really want to address those. Specifically, there was a comment about the tax base. I want the public to know, at least from my standpoint, whether I approve or deny this has nothing to do with the tax base on this issue occasionally that would when deals come along like a Facebook or something like that. But in a deal like this, tax base really doesn't mean, that doesn't impact my decision. I'm not, I would not approve this based on the fact that we're going to have more taxes. That's, that's not in my mind tonight. That's the furthest from what I'm thinking. Looking at what we're trying to do, it's, it's a decision of going from commercial to a mix of residential and commercial. When I look at the grand scheme of things, I obviously I'd much rather keep commercial. But for when we are considering residential, I strongly prefer single-family owner-occupied homes. I always prefer those over the other in our city. And just in that kind of scenario, we can't guarantee that no one's going to rent them, but at least their owner, their owner, excuse me, their owner occupied for the most part, at least that's the origination and that's what worked the plan is. I like to always weigh out on a land issue and a reason, compatibility. I would argue, I could argue, really, on all sides, it's compatible. Maybe in that extreme southwest corner, it might not be. But when you have Bacca's Highway, you can down there put just about anything in there that's super dense. And that's just, it's going to be compatible. So I can't really put an argument against that. There has been a lot of discussion about the commercial, about the timing of commercial coming into our city. I can tell the public right now that as a city, the mayor made a comment to it a few minutes ago, we have worked hard at trying to make this specific corner a marketable piece. I know the developers done that, the owner of the land has done that, the city has done that. We've offered Uh, we've offered incentives to businesses to come to this corner. And for some reason, in the seven years I've been on this council, I cannot tell you how many times we've sat in a closed session and discussed this very corner and trying to make it, uh, something happen, and it just hasn't happened. And it could be, uh, the use, uh, but that's not necessarily the argument I'm going to make. It might be timing, maybe in twenty years it might be something totally different. But then I fall back on, is it right for us to tell the landowner that you're just going to have to wait twenty years? Top. I don't know. Uh, now we're, now we're talking about the issue of landowner rights, and what rights do we have to tell them they, they can't build? Um, that's what they choose to do, we just need to make sure that they're not, uh, im- imposing on the rest of the city. And it falls back to the comment that Councilmember, uh, Jacob just made, and, uh, he talks about, will adversity impact the city? And that's a, that's a nagging question in the back of my head is, is will it? And I think I can make an argument for or against. And so it kind of leaves me on the fence on that issue. But in the end, um, this is kind of the summation. Um, I have a lot more comments, but I just wanted to brief. In this motion, there, there are two aspects that are being brought up, and that's specifically the rezon in addition to, uh, an approval for the premen- preliminary development plan. And although I would be in favor of the rezon at this point, I'm not feeling comfortable with the, uh, the development plan. And as a result, I'm going to stand against this motion, but if it was parsed into two, I would definitely be in favor of the rezon at this point.
House Member Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me brief, as I've kind of said my piece on this already. Technically it's a rezon, it's a future land use map amendment. Still staying under the, uh, planned community zone. Just to clarify that. I, I just find it ironic that we're kind of eager to, not we, but some council members are, are supportive of this when we have a hard time rezoning an R one-ten to an R one-eight because we don't like smaller lots, or we have a hard time rezoning, uh, a big empty field that happens to be zoned, uh, A twenty to an R one-twelve because, you know, that's too many houses into the same, into the same corner. Yet here, we're willing to pack in a hundred and fourteen houses on eleven acres, uh, eleven point seven acres. With no requirement, by the way, for housing size, uh, which seems to be that every new house that we build in the city, according to this council lately, has been, oh, it's got to be an E-sized home or bigger. Who cares what a small a lot is? Squish that house on there. It just seems highly ironic to me that, that, that we would approve this particular development plan. Um, I'll just leave it at that.
Councilmember Hagan.
Yeah, real quick, Mayor, uh, I just wanted to, just because I made the motion, I've, I've done a lot of due diligence on this, I contacted planning commission, and I echo what other councilmen have said for how hard our planning commission works. And we read, at least I do, we read those results and what you say. However, you know, and there was a couple of times it was said precedent, resetting a precedent, and I've had three homes here in West Jordan, and the second home was this kind of development where my wife and I, two little babies, bought a home, and the corner of Ninety South and Thirteenth West, this same type of development happened. It's still viable, still, um, a viable retail area, it's had transition, but despite, if you look at what's came around it, the big box stores, they went dark. But these smaller retailers are still surviving in some of these areas. So if the precedent, um, no, it's been, it was here twenty-five years ago, and I think a development like this, as a past retailer, you're going to see businessmen start driving by this and say, wow, they're building homes there. They're, look at all those, that neighborhood. And you'll see our, the realtors pitching those customers to come. And so I, I think it's a great move and a message to retailers out there, we have space on that, in West, West Jordan. Thanks, Mayor.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Nope.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Vote passes five to two.
I have a question. Uh, Councilmember McConaughey, when you, uh, tabled, um, item seven A, did you say we would revisit it after eight A?
I said after the four public hearings.
Okay. Okay. Item eight B, receive public input and consider for approval ordinance sixteen dash five four, amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code regarding certain exceptions for food manufacturing facilities, section thirteen dash thirteen dash eight, park strip landscaping, section thirteen dash thirteen dash six, materials and standards, and thirteen dash fourteen dash three, general provisions and regulations, citywide applicability, maxims, ul- ultra-care, Papa Pita Bakery. David, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Ray will, uh, address this issue.
Mayor, members of the council, um, as this was explained at the planning commission meeting, Papa Pita is a, a food manufacturing business that's been in the city for some time now. They provide bakery products to a number of national, um, companies like Costco and Kroger and, uh, and Walmart. And in order for them to supply their products to these stores, they're required to be what's, uh, they have referred to as an SQF level three certification, which is the highest, uh, food certification that's, that's possible. Um, I think recently they, they have, they're looking at expanding their business now, and they've been having problems with birds getting into the facilities when the trucks back in, the doors open up, birds flying in, which creates a health, um, uh, health and safety issue for them. So what they've done is they've come to the, uh, the, uh, city and have asked for, um, certain exceptions to the code that just would apply to food manufacturing facilities only. And, uh, so what they've done, and there's a, a couple of other issues that, uh, they're dealing with as well, but what they did is they went through the, the code, and there were four areas that they would like to see amended. So we took the, those amendments that they had given to us, and then, uh, we forwarded those to the planning commission, and the planning commission, um, looked those over and then, uh, made a recommendation, which, which is included in your, your staff reports. I'll just go over them briefly. Uh, the first is that, uh, is actually part of the purposes and, and scope section of the parking code. Uh, what they had liked to see is, uh, they're, I guess they're having problems with their, uh, they would like to have a, a fence around their entire property and gated, um, and they wanted to make that exclusion specifically for food handling businesses. But looking at the code, really, that's something that we can already address in that, we really didn't see a need to change the code to, um, to apply to that. Plus, it really kind of doesn't belong in the purposes and scope section. So, uh, staff had recommended against it, uh, and the planning commission, uh, agreed with that, so they're really recommending no changes to that text, given that we can already handle that under the existing code. So that's the, the first section that they were looking at. The second was, uh, for the park strip landscaping requirement. One of the issues that they have is when you get a lot of vegetation that's close to those loading bays, um, birds have a tendency to come in, land, and then they take advantage when the doors open, birds fly in, and then it's a, it's problematic to remove those. And so what they'd like to do is just move, um, those, uh, the vegetation just away from those, those doors. When the planning commission looked at it, I think we, uh, staff had recommended that some alternative language perhaps to what they were initially talking about. We were thinking for a food manufacturing facility or food distribution facility, uh, we required park strip trees that are within three hundred feet of overhead doors or loading docks, maybe located or relocated in an equivalent number, uh, to other landscaped areas on the side. Basically what this says is if you've got street trees that are located within three hundred feet of the dock, they can be put elsewhere on the side. So, uh, that was, that was our recommendation, the planning commission agreed with that. The, uh, the next section was just to reduce the overall amount of, uh, plant coverage to twenty percent, I guess, and my understanding is the reason for that again was to just minimize the amount of vegetation that's by those loading doors. But, uh, when we got to looking at this, we were thinking that, you know, really there's a lot of different kinds of vegetation and ground covers that can be used that simply don't attract birds, and so we really didn't see where there was a need to reduce the, um, the overall amount of landscaping, uh, to twenty percent. And the planning commission also, uh, recommended, uh, what staff was recommending is just keep it at the, the forty percent. The, uh, final change was, um, relating more to screening than anything else. They had asked that, that the screening, uh, be totally eliminated if the doors are a hundred feet or greater away from a public way. We're thinking a hundred feet is really not that far. And so what we had recommended, um, the, we'd recommended some language, but the planning commission, um, has also recommended language, and I inserted into this. And what they said is that, um, uh, let's see, this is loading areas for delivery or freight vehicles shall be designed to provide submission area for the vehicles to be completely screened from public view during loading and unloading process. And then they put an exception in, if the doors are in view of the street, then they shall be screened with the trees and shrubs or have a combination of decorative design elements, as reviewed by the design review committee and is approved by the planning commission. So really what it does is it gives more discretion to the, the design review committee and, and planning commission. So those are the, the recommended cha- the changes that were recommended, again, by the planning commission. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Questions from council? Councilmember Anderson.
On thirteen twelve one, and I know the, uh, the planning commission didn't recommend any changes, but the comments in the notes say gates are allowed to be closed during non-business hours but shall be open during business hours. Um, if, I assume that would accommodate if they're twenty-four seven operations, if they're manufacturing all the time. Um, would that be specific to visitor parking, where they have, uh, visitors would have access if they were coming to do business with the food processor and the staff stays secure? Or what, what is required for a food processing facility? If they're having the fence all around, it would seem to me that it needs to be secure more than being open during business hours, especially if they're twenty-four seven.
Right. And it's really kind of up to discretion of the, that, that company as to wh- where they gate, or where they put those gates. So, um, it would be certainly up to them if they'd like to incl- uh, just keep visitor parking available, um, uh, at, at all hours, uh, or close it off. So it's really kind of up to, there's nothing code specific on it, but it's just kind of up to the, um, the company as to how they want to manage that.
But, but we're not requiring them to have their gates open?
No.
During business hours?
Just, uh, the emergency vehicles just have that, have to have access?
Right.
To the facility, so there's ways to, to do that, to have certain boxes with keys, I guess they can get in at all hours, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, on the park strip trees, we're not reducing the number, we're just changing the locations of them, is that correct?
Yeah, we, we're allowing them the flexibility to put them somewhere else on the site, so that's correct. We're not reducing those, we're just allowing them. And again, it's only for food manufacturing companies, and so it's, there are just not that many of them there, so we're able to see a, a huge impact.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roth. We'll now open the public hearing for item eight B. If you're here to speak on this item, now would be the time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing for item, item eight B, and return to council for discussion and no motion. Councilmember Jacob.
I was ready for motion, if there's no comments.
That would be in order.
All right. I move to approve ordinance sixteen dash fifty-four, amending the text of title thirteen of the two thousand nine city code.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jacob and a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion is in motion. Councilmember Burton.
I just wanted to mention, I think it's good that the city is providing the flexibility for the businesses to meet their needs and stay where they are and continue to do their process. So, thank you, city, for finding a way to make this work that it can work both for the city and for the customers, residents, businesses.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a clarification, uh, the motion was to amend the text title thirteen, the city code that doesn't allude to, uh, the recommended, the recommendation of the planning commission. I just want to make sure that includes the recommended changes of the planning commission.
It does, those are incorporated in the, uh, in the ordinance as it was presented in the staff report.
All of them?
I believe so.
That's just, okay, that's all I, I just wanted that, no, just to make sure they were all there. Thank you.
Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Mayor Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
I'd just like to state at the end of that, that, uh, when this new addition is built, we'll have the largest baker in the entire west, in the city of West Jordan. Item eight C, public hearing item, receive public input and consider amending the two thousand nine West Jordan Municipal Code, title thirteen, to allow indoor secured self-storage as a conditional use in the SC two zone. Citywide applicability. H one B Realty Advisors. Jeffrey A. Bernson, applicant. David?
Yes, Scott Lincoln will address this issue.
Thanks.
Well, Mayor and council? Wow, that's loud. Okay, you're awake now. All right. Um, I, uh, to, to be respectful of time, I'm not going to go into the, the details of every, uh, requested amendment, however, I do want to, uh, address the topic in general. Um, as, uh, Mayor, as you indicated with your, your summary, uh, this is a request to, um, possibly c- uh, conditionally allow, uh, indoor self-storage units in all of our SC two zoning districts. And, uh, as staff has reviewed this request, as we've brought it to the planning commission, uh, we, we, uh, with a, a strong, uh, recommendation, uh, hope that the council does not approve this proposed text amendment. Now, I'll, uh, go through the reasons why here. Uh, our SC two zoning district is, uh, our most widely used commercial district in the city. And today's, uh, tonight's, uh, discussion, uh, that we've had previous and the other items has provided an inter- into, an interesting backdrop to, to commercial development in the city. I've actually updated that number, uh, instead of three hundred and eighty-two, it's, it's approximately four hundred and twenty acres of real estate in West Jordan that is currently zoned SC two. And it's not just the volume, it's the location of these properties that, uh, that has caused us, uh, concern about this proposed text amendment. Most of these properties are located on, uh, key corridors and intersections. And, uh, just to put it in perspective, we had a presentation tonight about, uh, Jordan Landing improvements. Uh, the commercial component, uh, of Jordan Landing is, is to, approximately two hundred acres. Now, that's zone SC three, but that just puts it in perspective of just how much acreage is designated at, as SC two. Uh, second reason to, uh, not approve this would be, uh, we feel this is a regression, not a progression in, in land use policy here for, for the city. Uh, let me explain. On page two of your report, I go into a brief, uh, background, uh, with some of the storage units we have currently in the city. Uh, historically, uh, from nineteen eighty to two thousand, the Uh, historically, uh, from 1980 to 2000, the city allowed with a conditional use permit, allowed, uh, storage units in our general commercial district. Uh, we have a few of those sprinkled along Redwood Road, uh, right now. And, um, in addition to that, we allowed it in our, our, uh, both of our industrial districts, the M1 and the M2 zones. Upon concerns back, uh, during that time that the storage units, uh, would continue to occupy, uh, this valuable real estate, uh, the council changed the code and passed ordinance, uh, 0027. And that removed storage units from our general commercial and our M2 zones. We, we, at the time that we were concerned that the, the onslaught of all these storage units would, uh, displace, uh, our valuable industrial, um, properties as well. Uh, M2 zones, for example, house, uh, big industries, uh, like Dan and Yogurt. Um, so that, uh, so at that point in 2000, uh, the council decided to only allow storage units in one zoning district in the city, which is our M1 zone. Uh, during the completion of the report, uh, we did a little research into some of the surrounding, uh, municipalities and, uh, they too have indicated that they, they've had some, some, uh, concerns about storage units, uh, taking up valuable real estate. Uh, in particular, City of Murray recently changed their ordinance, uh, to kind of follow what we did 16 years ago. And, and they stripped it out of some of their commercial zones because they had some, some, um, in their, in their estimation valuable real estate that was taken up by, by these storage units. Reason three, um, over the past 10 months, we've had well over a dozen, uh, applications for storage units come to the city. Uh, we currently have seven active, uh, uh, applications in the city that, that are, that would support, uh, storage units. Uh, the commission, the planning commission and the city council doesn't see those, uh, but, uh, we are continuing to see, uh, an onslaught of, of these storage units, which indicates that there is a need for this type of use. Uh, but, uh, the, the current, uh, uh, code which allows them in the M1 zone seems to be working just fine. And then, uh, as you've gone, hopefully gone through the, the staff report, uh, there are, uh, clear, um, indications that the, the request does not conform to the purposes of our general plan. Uh, in particular, uh, starting on, uh, page six of your report, uh, we go through, there, there's, uh, uh, four fi, or four findings of fact that are required for text amendments. And, uh, only one of those four criteria, we believe that, that this request can, can meet. You know, the applicants claim, uh, that the text amendment, um, is a good option to re, revitalize some depressed commercial big box stores is, it's interesting and, and we do appreciate, uh, their efforts to kind of, uh, ferret out this, this, uh, this process. But, um, we're concerned that, uh, it doesn't again meet the, the intent of the general plan nor the purposes of the SC2 zone. The general plan allows for and encourages, uh, community commercial, uh, development or SC2 zones to, to have an anchor or, or a traffic generator which would support ancillary, uh, uh, smaller stores. Our concern with, with, uh, potentially placing storage units in our SC2 zones would be the, uh, inability to generate traffic to and from the center. And on page seven of your staff report, I don't have it here as a slide, but it's on page, page seven of your staff report, I took a picture of, uh, the corner of Van Winkle and 56 South, uh, in Murray. And, uh, that, uh, that was one of the reasons why the City of Murray changed their code. Uh, you can see by that picture, it's not generating a lot of traffic. You have a big empty parking lot. And, uh, some of the other, uh, smaller businesses in that center are, are going to struggle. Again, the, the proposal is, is not conformist with the purposes of the SC2 zone. The, uh, reading right out of the text of the SC2 zone, it says, quote, "A junior department store or supermarket will characterize uses permitted in the SC2 zone as anchors by a wider range, uh, by a wide range of restaurants, specialty shops and hard goods and soft goods stores." Again, it's, it's the anchor, it's the draw to the center that, that is, uh, crucial to the smaller businesses. And, uh, again, going through the required criteria for tax amendment, uh, we as staff and the planning commission, uh, feel that, uh, only one of the four criteria needed to be met, uh, for a tax amendment can, can actually be met. So, uh, and last but not least, uh, the proposed language, uh, before you tonight, uh, in the staff report and in the applicant's letter, we feel is very, uh, ambiguous and very, there's a lot of subjective terms in there that make it very difficult for staff to administer and then to enforce. Uh, a good land use, uh, ordinance is clear and it's enforceable. And, uh, this does not meet either one of those, uh, those in our estimation. And so, uh, in summary, again, we don't support this proposed amendment. We feel that, uh, it might be a, a short-term solution, possibly to, to some of our centers, but in the long run, long term, uh, which we've been, been, uh, asked to, to look at, uh, it would not be to the benefit of the city. And so, uh, again, I'm happy to go through point by point i- if there's any questions about, uh, any particulars of the proposed, uh, tax amendment, but at this time, Mayor, I'll, I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Questions from council? Councilmember Hega.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so, uh, indoor storage, can you, can you, uh, put a definition? I've read it, but it's still container? Is it a, you know, a trailer? So what kind, what do you define?
So typically indoor storage is, is you have, uh, indoor or, or limited access. You have a couple of doors where you enter hallways, you go in, uh, it can either be climate controlled, uh, or, or, you know, you, you don't necessarily have to have a climate control, but instead of your typical storage unit where you drive through a gate with your truck and you go in and, and you go to your, walk up to your individual unit, you're outside and you roll up the door, that's, that's what we normally would see. Uh, indoor storage where you would go in through a secured door, you could walk down a hallway and then, uh, within the, the enclosure of, of the hall, enclosed hallway, you would access those, those individual units. Does that make sense?
No, not really. So, so I'm visualizing, um, a business, retail business in the commercial, bringing in truckloads, the drivers drop off, you know, trailers, containers. We're not talking about those then.
The, the individual pods? No. No, we're not talking.
We're talking about something that's actually inside their building?
Correct.
But, but if they own a building and are they asking for construction in that? Is that the idea? I'm still confused.
The, the applicant is here, so you could, you could get some clarification on their, their, uh, business model. But indoor storage in my experience is you access your individual units from within an enclosed hallway instead of from an outdoor alleyway or roadway. That's the main difference.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. The applicant have a presentation?
Jeff Burnson, uh, giving my office address, 7324 South Union Park Avenue in Midville, Utah.
Chris Hortel, uh, office 320 West 500 South, town of Utah.
First of all, I'd like to start with number seven first and go up maybe. Uh, I'll actually just start with number seven. Uh, I prepared that text amendment and it was basically just, uh, I was asked specifically by, uh, planning to actually define some of the terms that I was using. Being, having been in real estate for a number of years and being very, uh, I, I consider myself fairly versed in the commercial aspects of real estate and development, et cetera, uh, felt like to define some of those terms, I thought they should have been, or they should be implemented within the text amendment itself. Perhaps that's not the case. It could be very simplified, I think, to, to basically purvey the opportunity of doing indoor self-storage. To answer the question of what indoor self-storage is, if you've ever had the opportunity of, uh, storing any items in a climate-controlled storage complex, when you go inside the doors where it's climate-controlled, you have access to your roll-up doors there. You would take your, uh, your goods and belongings through that door, inside that, uh, self-contained building and go to wherever your storage unit is and put your goods in that storage unit, roll down the door, lock it and leave. And that door would be left, would, would be kept locked, uh, locked so that nobody else other than other, uh, participants or other, uh, clients who have storage units in that space can access. What, what our basic intent is here is I, I really appreciate when cities talk about their zoning, what they've set up with their SC1, SC2, SC3, in your case zones, where you have a neighborhood, a community and a basically regional-type center activity, uh, center of activity. As, as was, uh, explained earlier with destination and support retail, basically that destination would be a community, a regional, so an SC2 or an SC3. Your SC1 would fill that basic support or neighborhood-type size, uh, commercial development. What, what I've looked at and noticed is, is, as I've been, become involved in, in West Jordan, is you have a tremendous amount of opportunity in this city with some of the redevelopment, uh, areas that I, I consider could be exceptional opportunities for somebody to come in and redevelop. However, sometimes it takes a little bit of impetus to get everybody focused on the larger opportunity that's involved in, in a specific area. And our, while a text amendment is, is citywide, we understand that, it's basically spurred by one specific property that we were targeting and focusing on. And so I, I know you can't do that on the text amendment side of things, it has to be citywide. But basically what we're looking at is taking a portion of a shopping center that is currently vacant. And I understand that, that vacancy may or may not matter to, to some of you folks on the council, uh, but it does matter when you want to make something economically viable. And basically if you look at some of your centers here and you compare the property tax valuations from this year back five, six, seven, eight years, you can see as much as 20% decrease in the value of those properties because of their vacancy. So there's a property tax, uh, loss that's there to the city and to the schools, to the community. You, you then couple that with sales tax revenues that are no longer there because you have vacant boxes. Uh, RC Willie, for example, goes out and builds a brand new store next to IKEA because that is now the new furniture center where people go to buy furniture. So they leave their other spaces vacant and, uh, and, and then the owner of, or the, uh, the next owner of that property has to go out and develop that property. Well, in a lot of these properties, there are constraints that are basically converted the, or, or basically rendered these properties non-conforming to your current zoning requirements. For example, uh, the RC Willie space is over 73,000 square feet, but yet can only park about 38,000 square feet. The parking field in front, as you're well aware, is very, uh, very, uh, narrow. And so you don't have the depth that you need to have the actual parking spaces to really support a retail facility. So the opportunity to come in and convert that space or some of that space or all that space into a storage, an indoor storage area allows somebody to come in and add maybe retail on the front as, as we conceptualized in some drawings that we put together for that site. A- and also allowed us to use a pad site out in front, which would basically revitalize that whole center, create more traffic. And as, uh, Mr. Hega had expressed earlier, that it's not the big box or the mid-boxes that are successful there. And per your SC1 zone or SC2 zone, I don't know a junior department store or grocer that would go in to that southwest corner of 90 South and Redwood Road. You've got Smith's Marketplace right across the street. I, I don't know who would, who would do that. The other thing, you've got ceiling height restraints in these buildings, in some of these buildings. You're limited to a 15, 14-foot high ceiling. You've got support poles within that confined area that might be 18 foot on center. I mean, that doesn't work for today's retailers if you could find one to take the space. So rather than going in demolishing the existing building that's there, look for an opportunity to create a use that could support additional retail being built onto or added onto the facade and maybe out onto the pad that would actually really create traffic, really create an opportunity to reinvigorate or revitalize, uh, a specific area. Uh, one thing we had asked for was, or that I put in there, was a limitation of 250,000 square feet of storage space for the city. Doesn't have to be 250, it could be 150. If we look at, at the RC Willie, just as an example, that would take 72,000 square feet of that 150. So you, you in essence have the opportunity of limiting the amount of storage that would be allowed for an indoor use in any, any of your vacated buildings. I'm sure you're all very well aware of the 13th to Redwood Road corridor on 90 South. You're aware of the vacancies that exist there. There might be some more vacancies coming up in the near future. That's just kind of the nature of the animal right now. Um, I had, had brought up a point in the planning commission meeting that right now, uh, Amazon, uh, delivers 47% of its product that it sells within a 20-mile radius of its distribution centers. They expect that to be over 60% in the next five years. I mean, we're talking brick and mortar is becoming very, very difficult to, to keep filled and to attract new tenancy. So with this in mind, you've got your Mountain View corridor, which is just, is, is great for your regional-type centers because those are the areas that carry the most amount of people and create the real traffic that, that's destination-oriented. And so I think that, that's something that needs to be considered. Again, the language, the, uh, uh, the, the way that the text amendment was written could certainly be rewritten and could certainly apply, I think, citywide and yet can still constrain anybody who wanted to come in and redevelop a project to a point that the city would have control still over that. And the reality is people don't necessarily want to put storage in, in buildings that can be converted to other retail if they can bring the retail in. Chris, do you have anything?
I have three comments. Uh, regression versus, uh, not progression. Thank you. Uh, regression versus progression. I think it is a progression. We've seen some of these other centers come in. In Farmington, they did one, Extra Space Storage did it. It was on a dark facility. Um, it had been dark for a long period. It had some tenancy in there, but it rolled from tenancy to tenancy with long periods of vacancy in between. On Van Winkle and 5600 South, they did the same type of product. This was a much bigger mall and they brought in a Trampoline Park, uh, Vasa Fitness came in. They couldn't fill the last part of that. Part of this is also refacing the front of the property, not keeping it in the current condition, adding another 12,000 square feet of retail. The other problem that Jeff brought, or forgot to bring up is the depth. You've got a, a fairly deep commercial building. A lot of the retailers that are looking for space are generally going to be less than 80 feet of depth. We've got two and a half times that depth in this building. And you bring that in with the lack of parking, if not this, you're going to have to find something to fill the back or tear down the building. And we've seen across the Wasatch Front, a lot of these buildings stay empty a very long time and they get worse and worse and worse and create more and more problems for the city. That's, that's all my comments.
I tried to get, uh, uh, my Bob to work here on, uh, for this, uh, Google Earth, uh, presentation that we had, but apparently we can't get Google Earth without the IT guys here to put it on. So, but it basically would show you kind of, uh, what we had, uh, prescribed for the, uh, the 90 South project. I actually have some pictures here or packets that I'd be happy to just bring up and let you kind of take a look through that to just kind of give you a flavor of what it is we're trying to do. If, if that's okay, I'd be happy.
You can hand it to the Farm City Clerk. Councilmember Hega? Councilmember Haga?
Can I, uh, I ask you a question again? Uh, because I'm intrigued with what you're, what's being proposed. So, because I worked at, for RC Willie, just so you know, and at that building, and I understand the exact layout of it. So, basically, the retail portion, if you were to look at that building, you would still revitalize as far as retail storefronts? And then in the back portion, you're talking about these indoor storage?
Correct. So part of this plan that's going to be handed out is to add another 12,000 square feet to the front of the building and turn the 70-some-odd-thousand square feet into the other. Uh, we've had, uh, interest from an urgent care facility that wants to go there. And then additionally, we'll have a, uh, retail pad out on the street. And that seems to be more of what, uh, the market is going to dictate. You know, there's, there's a certain amount of, uh, retail that comes with house tops. I live in Caysville personally, and for years and years, they tried to get a, uh, shopping center on the west side. And back then, it was 7,000 rooftops to support one grocery store. And, um, you know, finally, we way surpassed that, and they got their, their retail center. But, uh, it just doesn't come because we want it to come. So, you know, as the mayor said, he went out to ICS and, uh, tried to get some people to come in. You know, they come where they, they feel the best places for them are going to be. And so we're left with kind of leftovers. In this case, uh, even Goodwill has turned down this location. Uh, Big Lots has turned down this location. There's probably a dozen or more, uh, that fall in that category of mid-boxes that have turned it down for, uh, different reasons. But most of what Mr. Burson talked about, ceiling heights, posts, steps, parking fields, et cetera.
Just one more. So if this was a conditional use, I mean, you, you'd still have to come in and make this up to code. I don't think this building is code fire-wise or things like that. So you're going to improve the building?
Yes.
If this were the model, I know this is hypothetical.
Correct. Yeah, it, it really does look pretty good. I, I don't want anybody thinking we're going to have a castle front on this or something. I think the average person would drive by and think this is a retail store other than the use inside.
Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you. Thank you for seeing a need in our city and providing some suggestions for our opportunities to approve it. Couple of questions on this tax, tax amendment. In addition to this location you discussed over at 90th South and Redwood Road, what other locations are you considering putting in storage units?
Actually, we haven't considered any other areas yet at this point. We were just looking and focusing more on the 90th South corridor. Uh, this would be one, uh, this would be a first step in, in looking at what we might be able to bring to the table for, uh, the space between nine, between Redwood Road and 13th West. We have, uh, some, some other ideas and some other, uh, co-investors who would be more than happy to come in and, and do some, some fairly large redevelopment in the area. But we, I've got to show them that things can start moving in, in a direction that's a positive direction. And I've kind of been, been given this one as the, as the first step in that process. And, uh, understanding that, you know, I really appreciate all the work the planning department does. They're great people. I've really enjoyed working with them, still do enjoy working with them. They've got great insight, and, and they're good folks. Um, I just, I've been so used to working out of the box most of my life that I like to try and see the, the future a little bit and not be confined so much into the past. And I know that sometimes when you take a step ahead, it can be a little nerve-wracking, particularly where you think you might be losing your SC2 zone, uh, property. But the reality is, you're already losing it. I mean, it's already lost in some cases, or at least it's, it's, it's been... I can't use that word anymore because that's not a PC word. So let's see, it's the other word I can use. It, it's been slowed down, let's put it that way.
Okay, a couple of other questions if I may. So you're looking at doing some additional work? Will those include storage units, is my question?
Um, you know, I, I would not see any of the other big-box space on, on that particular corridor, or even if we go over to the 78 South because we've talked a little bit about the 78 South, Redwood Road, that project as well, where the school district is. But no, we, we wouldn't consider that at all. That would be, that would be kind of tear-down rebuild on that site. Whereas on this, this particular building, you've already got nice structures on the north that are already nice and could be further enhanced. You've already got pad sites out there that are performing. So you, you're not going in and, and basically demolishing that. And there's really no opportunity to demolish that building that's there right now because of the cost of the land and the cost to get into the project. What we have is we have an opportunity to do tenant improvements in that, to bring it up to code, as been mentioned, and to, to give a new use to it, which would allow further retail use to be added onto the front and by virtue of a pad site up front. And I know there were comments, as, as I read through my comments here from the planning commission, because one of the, uh, planning commissioners had mentioned the fact that, well, you put a pad site out front, that just blocks the front. Well, not really in this case because it's, it's, it's juxtaposed and set off to the south. So you still have the view corridor to the new, uh, newly refurbished frontage there. The other thing too is putting parapets on the front of that RC Willie space is the roof structure would not sustain any snow that could be backed up with the winds as the snow piles up behind those parapets. Would basically cause potential roof failure. So we're basically prescribed to have to bring that out with a new addition up front. So that's kind of the reason why, why we're going to this text amendment. Unless we could cut out this piece and zone it M1. But I don't think anybody will do that.
One more question, Mayor, if I may. The access to the storage, will that be on the side, on the back, on the front? How will they get in for the storage?
We, we would have a, an office that would be up front. We would have access around the back to the big doors that are already there. We have dock high-loading, and we also have ground-level loading.
So would, would people come to put access to storage in it? They wouldn't go to the office, they would go to the back side of it?
No, they would go to the office to buy, say, boxes or tape or whatever. But they would go in the behind to unload or load.
They have a pickup truck area, we'll call on the south side. Then on the southwest side, they have a big truck area. So we would utilize both of those as well as adding some fencing like they did up on Van Winkle with a security gate as well.
So on the back of that building, there's some parking area or paved area. What would you do for your barrier behind there to keep access or provide security? You have a wall there. Would you need to do like barbed wire on top of that wall? Or would that eliminate that? And what kind of a barrier do you have between that and the residences that are behind that building?
Well, right now, you've already got your barrier in the, uh, with the canal. I mean, it's already there. It's already created, been created. Basically, the height of the, the roof of the building. So, so that's already there. As, uh, Mr. Hartel was mentioning, we would go ahead and have security gates would be on both ends back there with access given to those folks who needed to have it either on the retail side on the north side or of course for emergency access.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question. 72,000 square feet in this building?
Seventy-two, eight, something like that.
Okay.
I think it's seven, I think it's actually 78,000 square feet.
How many storage units approximately did you, you figure go in there?
You know, it depends on the size. We've done a report. I, it's been done for four months. I honestly can't remember. The ones that we've seen that are like this have gone to an average of 10 by 15. And, uh, you know, it's going to limit the number of people that go in.
Right.
Uh, square-footage-wise, you're going to lose probably 20 to 25% to the whole.
Okay. Okay, and, uh, how much on average? I've, I haven't rented a storage unit in about 20 years. So how much on average does a storage unit, a 10 by 15, rent for today?
Uh, in interior climate-controlled, uh, according to the report our management company did, uh, was a dollar to a dollar fifteen per square foot per month.
Okay. And then last, my last question is, uh, was something you just mentioned a, a minute ago is, did you discuss the possibility of staff of rezoning this to an M1 zone for your, for this, this particular building or this particular person?
Um, I think it was mentioned in passing, but it, it passed as fast as it came out of my mouth, I think. It was, it was probably because of the fact that within an M1 zone, you've got other uses that could be done on that site that would not just restrict it to a, a storage, an indoor storage site. So not thinking that the other retailers around it, nor the people behind would like an M1 zone right there and next to an SC2 zone. Uh, we didn't really pursue that. So what we did was, we took the, the path of, of the most resistance and went into a text amendment in an SC2 zone. Feeling that it, it, I don't know why it could not be written in such a way that it could be limiting, but yet be inclusive of areas that really need some, some revitalization. Because I, I will tell you that from experience, this will generate good retail activity in that center. It won't generate a lot of visits to the storage complex. But what it will do is allow somebody to go in and really do what needs to be done with a facelift on that property and create an additional pad outside, which will add value to the property. By the way, the, the storage complex itself, once it's built and occupied and stabilized, will probably have a, a low value of about eight, eight and a half million and it could be much higher than that just for the storage, not to include the retail that would be built up front. But again, like I say, what it does is it creates, it, it creates more excitement. It, it diminishes your, your urban heat field that's created there with all of that empty parking that's not being used now. It also gives you a new facade, a new facelift. It, it creates momentum for other people to want to do things in that specific area. And, and I, I just think there are a lot of things that can be done. Like I say, I think you folks in West Jordan have tremendous opportunity ahead of you here with the properties you have and specifically designed for redevelopment. We can get into other avenues of, of how that can be done at another time. But there's just tremendous opportunity for you here. And I, I think this is not a diminishing opportunity. It's not a regression. I think it's progress. I think you're moving forward and taking advantage of the tools that are out there in order to revitalize and reinvigorate a, a, a blighted center. I call it blighted because it's vacant. And it's been vacant for years, not just months, for years.
Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing for item 8C.
Hilton Green, you all know me. Uh, by the way, thanks for the reappointment or the punishment for the reappointment, one of the two.
You applied, man.
I did apply. This is a bad idea. If you read the text amendment, what I want you to do is throw out the corner at 90th South and Redwood Road. Do not consider the project. Consider the text amendment and what we're attempting to do in the text amendment, and this is a bad idea. Allowing the storage units under a conditional use, given the current constraints, is a bad idea. What we need to do, and, and, and Scott and I have talked, Mr. Langford and I have talked after the meeting, I don't want to turn down some development in the city. Allowing a conditional use in an SC2 zone is a bad idea. What we do need to do, and I think we could come up with a better plan, is to come up with some sort of, for lack of a better term, and I'll, I'll throw out the term, a planned commercial development. We know what a, we know what a planned community zone is supposed to do, right? We have the, we have the pockets, and we have the, the pathways and all those other kinds of things. Let's have a comprehensive plan for a project. I will tell you that the applicant told us and the planning commission it was 50,000 square feet of storage, and now it's 72,000 on the corner of 90th South and 7, 90th South and 17th West. But, uh, what we need to do is, is, is if you look at the, for example, the, the one up on Van Winkle, you got a storage with this big empty parking lot. That's where we need to have the comprehensive, uh, development plan. And having a few thousand square feet in a pad out front isn't it. If you could envision, from what I would envision, you've all probably driven down 123rd South at about 30th with all that, that stuff from the old day dairy and the way they've done it in the villages at day dairy. If you could do some retail like that and have a bunch of that with a storage behind it, I'd buy that. So what we really need to look at is a better ordinance. This one isn't it. What we do need to do is look at a better ordinance that allows this, but allows to, to, for us to control that like we would a PC zone. Uh, the last thing I will interject is, if you look at the language of the text amendment, it actually says that you can't build a storage, uh, the storage units in the same vicinity or multiples. However, it's worded with check-cashing places and pawn shops, and we have an issue on the corner of 90th and Redwood Road. So there, there's some really ambiguous problem with the text. So with this one, I would ask you to reject it. Give the planning commission and maybe the applicant a chance to sit down and rework a viable text amendment that will allow us to have either an overlay or some specific zone that we can limit, that we can come up with a good project, not just a conditional use. Thank you.
Excuse me, can we just have your name and address for the record?
I said my name.
And address.
You want my address? 7707 Battlefield Cove.
I just wanted to set the record straight. The 50,000 was in reference, I think it was either 40,000 or 50,000 was in reference to the text amendment. That was the minimum space that could be considered in the text amendment. It was never 50,000 square feet, never proposed as that, never presented as that on my part, anyway. If, uh, it was misunderstood, I apologize for that, but that's what was...
Please do the clarification.
Steve Jones, 3234 West, 16920 South. I'm just going to weigh in on a little bit. Not so much on what's happening with the text, but more of, of what's been created, um, in our city with the cap-and-trade and the high usage of high-density and these smaller lots. Um, this is a direct outcome of it. People still have things that they want to own. And when you force them to, through whatever, economics or whatever, force them to buy these smaller lots of these bigger homes, this is the outcome. They have to have someplace to put their toys. Simple as that. And so I look at, you know, Chris talked about a little earlier about the, the corner there at 70th South, that Albertson's in the right. That building has been sitting vacant 20 years. I mean, it's, it's been forever. And if these gentlemen want to come up with a way to use that and, and be able to have it, to me, look exactly the way that it looks right now, only not being used, I don't know why you would jump on that. Now, whether that's a matter of coming up with a new zoning or, or some way to, um, you know, to, to accommodate everybody, great. But there is a need, and there will continue to be a need as long as you put in high-density housing, high-density apartments in places where, where you just do not have the storage capacity. Um, I hate the outdoor. I, I had to use the outdoor-type places. They typically are, they look cheap, they look dirty, and, and all they did for me was every month raise the rent. I would much rather see something in a, in a closed building that is basically hidden, but yet still generates revenue. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll close the public hearing by item 8C referred to the council. Councilmember McCain?
Thank you, Mayor. This one, this one hits kind of close to home for me for a couple of reasons. Uh, first of all, I get pretty excited about storage because in my prior life, that was the industry I worked in. I spent a number of years as a financial analyst for what was at the time the second-largest, uh, self-storage company in the U.S. And it's a very interesting industry. It's a $9 billion industry. So, um, it, it's not something just West Jordan is dealing with, it's something across, across the country. Basically, uh, we're addicted to our stuff. We want to have our stuff. We don't want to get rid of it when a house no longer fits it. We'll pay more than the stuff is worth to store it off somewhere. And that produces a lot of revenue. Um, I, I very much like the idea of indoor storage. Uh, it can be done very, very well. I do think it's something that should be closely monitored, though. Um, the item that really sticks out to me that staff brought up, while I disagree with a number of their points, I come to the same conclusion. number of their points, I come to the same conclusion as them. Number one, affecting all of the SC2 zones throughout the city, you don't do that for one project. You have to be very, very careful. Self-storage can be done in such a way that it can be an attractive product, not necessarily the typical outdoor stuff that you see. The outdoor stuff does work well for odd-shaped parcels, for remnant parcels, things that may not have too much frontage or may be in a high-density, high-traffic area where you don't have other commercial opportunities. I don't think it should be the first go-to. One of the other interesting things about self-storage is it's a very fragmented industry. Although I worked for the second-largest company, the top five companies in the U.S. own only a small fraction of the market because it is a very small, very segmented industry. So, you do get a lot of non-standard things. You don't have a lot of consistency, you don't have a lot of barriers to entry, it's relatively expensive to go in and retrofit a building. It can cause a lot of problems if it's not done right. This is very broad, rather vague, I think it would produce quite a few problems. I think Mr. Green hit the nail down on the head when he was up here. I think there are plenty of places where this can be applicable, but we shouldn't be making a citywide change to our code for the benefit of one particular project when there can be such a ripple effect with this that I just can't be supportive of this one. But again, I am supportive of self-storage as a whole. I think there's lots of opportunities, lots of ways that it adds value to the city, especially when it does come to the property tax valuation and the revenue provided to the city. But it just shouldn't be a primary go-to, and if we do this, I worry that that's going to be the primary go-to for a number of developers when they're looking for a quick way to build up the property. And while in the short term, meaning five to 15 years, it might be beneficial for the city from a revenue perspective, over a long-term, 50-plus-year vantage point, I think this is going to be problematic. So, I would not be in favor of the proposal, rather I would be supportive of staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, what Councilmember McConaughey just said and what Commissioner Green mentioned, this is, it's not a bad idea, this just isn't the right execution of it. I think the conditional use permit is barking up the right tree, but again, we're not quite there yet. This is really close, and I like the idea and everything that the applicant has mentioned. I agree with, I'm not disagreeing with you as far as conceptually, but the execution here is lacking. I think it's a good first step in the right direction, I just don't think it's the final step yet. So, at this point, this is a no from me. Thanks.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chris and Jeff, for bringing this to us and putting this work into this. And I think I would love to see something happen to that building, it needs some attention, and the plan you have to spruce it up and make it look good, I think is excellent. And there was been the mention of having this go across citywide, but it seems like I read something about there's a limitation on how much square footage would be able to fit within its own, so once this is developed, it would limit other in due to that square footage. So, I think that is a good part of this, it helps some of that portion. I think with the sticking another pad in that parking lot to help keep that parking lot from looking empty is also another good addition. So, you've got some bigger addition there. What I would really like to see you do is not drop this ball, but to work with it and see if we can tighten it down or find some way to make it work on this location only and not the text amendment that goes across the entire city. Because with that building set backward is, with the canal behind there, and making the front look good, and tightening with the other part that's already there, I think those are all good ideas. But at this point, the way this is written, I would be in opposition to it.
Councilmember Hagan.
Thanks, Mayor. I've been intrigued with this because I have family members, I have similar buildings to these, and other cities allow more adaptive uses on some of the square footage in the back of these big buildings, and that's what I'm seeing with this idea. I'm a proponent because it's innovative and we need to lighten up some of our buildings that are totally dark right now, and we've lost Cayman Earth, and we've lost Parsy Willie. Let's don't turn innovative businesses away from coming into our city and creating business and keeping our areas alive. So, I'm a proponent of this change.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. If there's no further comments, I'm ready for a motion.
That'd be in order.
Then, based on the information presented today, as well as the information in the staff report, I move that the council deny the proposed text amendment to city code that would conditionally permit self-storage in the SC2 zone.
Second. A motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion. I will be supporting it. Councilmember Nichols.
Sorry about that. Just a quick comment, I'll be supporting the motion, but I want to echo what Commissioner Green brought up, because that's where my mind was before you stood up, is we need to come up with an idea that's a hybrid that allows these two entities to operate together, because to me, it makes sense. I just don't think this is the right avenue. Thank you.
I will be supporting the motion because I would not like to see this type of use in SC zones. We have many other locations that are M1 zones, that are larger square footage than they're talking here, that have been sitting vacant for a lot longer than RC Willie has. And I believe that it fits in the M1 zone better, and I believe that would be a proper use in M1. Shopping centers, even though the big box seems to be a thing of the past in most cases, they can be divided into smaller and more modern shopping areas. And for the tax base alone, I would like to retain that type of zone in those areas.
First vote.
Mayor Raff.
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan.
No.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Aye.
Vote passes six to one.
Item 8D, receive input and consider for approval Resolution 16-198, amending the general fund, capital support fund, buildings capital fund, and fleet fund for fiscal year 2016-2017. Deal?
Mayor, we have several budget adjustments that are needed to reflect newer revised activities since the development of the 2016-2017 budgets. They're outlined in the packet, and they total, general fund, 79,317, capital support fund, 250,000, buildings capital fund of 250,000, and the fleet fund of 590,000. They're all detailed in the packet. Are there any questions for me at this point?
Questions from council? Councilmember Hagan.
So, I just wanted to, because I've met with Bill today, I appreciate your time today with Eric, and I would just like to emphasize the fact that we take that fleet fund money and earmark it, so that Stormwater, who we are purchasing these vehicles for, reimburses our general fund, so that'd be my only request on these... We're talking about the amendment, right?
Right.
So, just a public note, you and I have talked about it, and I think that's going to happen, but just in public, so we earmark that Stormwater, since the fees are going to probably go up tonight, that that money is accounted for in our general fund some way backwards, so thank you.
We'll take care of that.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question for you, Bill, Mr. Pepper. The fiscal impact statement says revenue and expenses would change equally as follows, general fund, capital support fund, buildings capital fund, fleet fund, as written, but in the detail, the background discussion, there is no revenue, there is only expense. There is some revenue, sorry, some of the smaller ones, there's, you know, we receive this grant, so we're going to spend it this way, so we've got to put in the revenue. But the larger ones, the most of the general fund, or a lot of the general fund, a lot of them are just, you know, the city has added this position, the city has decided to fund at this position, city desires to acquire this property, the city has been, desires to appropriate this money, without saying where exactly that's coming from. So, I was just curious as to if we're going to spend more, how do we earn more? Thanks.
Some of those funds would come from reserves.
Okay, is that detailed somewhere that's not in the staff report?
It's not detailed specifically unless, like for instance, on the police department receiving the grant.
Right.
And so forth.
But the money coming from reserves is not...
It's not detailed specifically.
It's not detailed. Okay, thank you.
I'll now open the public hearing for item 8D. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, now would be the time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing for item 8D and return to the council. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. If there's no comment, I'm ready for a motion.
That'd be in order.
I move to approve Resolution 16-198, amending the budgets for the affected funds for fiscal year 2016-2017. One second.
A motion by Councilmember McConaughey and a second by Councilmember Jacob.
That was Anderson.
Sorry, Councilmember Anderson, apologize. Discussion of the motion. Councilmember Hagan.
Excuse me, I support this motion. I just wanted to emphasize one thing, from being in office for three years, and I remember sitting down on my first budget amendment, probably, you know, in January, February, where we amended the budget to 53, no, I round up, 53 million dollars. And in three years, just shows you the growth of our city, we're at 64-plus million dollars, so just a track record of growth in our city. I know it's a budget, I know we're projecting, but so far, those projections are coming true, so thanks for your good work and answering all my questions on that, on this amendment. I support it.
Just to be clear, the caper isn't a projection, it's actual. Yeah, we are, but we have facts for last year. That's all.
Councilmember Jacob.
No.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton, would you like to vote on this?
I'd like to abstain, please.
Okay. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Mayor Raff.
Yes.
Vote passes five to two.
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify, just that, no, it was only because I'd like to see the revenue sources in the same report that we see the expenses sources. I'm just picky that way, thanks.
We will move back to item 7A. Appeal of the planning commission decision, December 6, 2016, regarding the denial of preliminary subdivision plan for the cottages at the Oaks of Jordan Hills, located at 6841 West, 7800 South, 114 lots on 11.71 acres, and one 2.8 acre, 8.9 acre commercial lot, Urban Chase Development, Management, Greg Hughes and Mark Garza applicants. Now, as I understand it, our city attorney, on an appeal, there is no public comment, the applicant speaks, the staff speaks, and then we go back to the council.
That's correct, Mayor. There's actually a setting of the procedures by city ordinance, and I can read it very quickly if you'd like. The hearing shall proceed with the following, the mayor setting forth that the applicant will allow 15 minutes to address the city council, summarize the information contained in the record and in the supplemental documentation, if any, and make any argument. The appellant will not be allowed to raise new issues or refer to new information not previously submitted to the city council. Following the appellant's presentation, the city staff will allow 15 minutes to make a presentation. City staff will also not be allowed to raise new issues or refer to new information not previously submitted to city council. Following presentation to the city council by the city staff, the appellant will have five minutes for a rebuttal presentation. This presentation will be limited by, as Briggs, I suppose, monitoring from the timetable. There is voting by the council procedure, and if you'd like, we can go over that now or when you get there, I'll defer to the...
We'll just refresh it when we get to that point, how's that?
Following, voting by the council, following the presentation, the city council may then discuss the appeal and ask questions of the appellant, city staff, and the planning commission representative. Following any questions and answer, the mayor will declare the hearing closed. The mayor will then call for a motion, and the city council may, in any lawful way, take a vote of three different ways. Number one, move and vote to deny the appeal. Number two, move and vote, grant the appeal with appropriate remedies. Or three, move and vote to take the appeal under advisement pending a final decision.
Question? Councilmember McConaughey.
Not a question, sort of a separate related issue. Based on the hour and that our city code requires our meetings to end at nine, I'm not wanting to impede upon the time from the applicant, I would move that we allow our meeting to extend to no later than 10:00 P.M.
Second. A motion, the second. Discussion. Hold on, paper.
Aye.
Any votes? What opposed? Pass it. Okay, we will hear from the applicant. As the applicant is walking forward, this is more like a courtroom now than a city council.
Any great cues? From my address, counsel? I didn't get it last night.
On the application.
472 Midlake Drive, Drake Beach, that's my home address. For fear of touching on items that I did not discuss in the planning commission, we did review this item at great length. I appreciate your questions, your concerns, the discussion that we had. The appeal before you is to approve, as I understand, the different configuration than what it was prior, and that is with the homes, single-family homes, with the retail on the corner. I would note, as I did in the city council or the planning commission meeting, that we worked very hard to earn staff recommendation, and it was not one we started with, it was one that we worked, I felt collaboratively with, to arrive at a plan to move forward and bring before the planning commission and yourself. Given the late hour, I don't have a lot more to add, but would point to maybe some of the robust discussion we had earlier in the night that is germane to this appeal and not anything that I may have added to those agenda items. So, thank you.
Thank you. Move from the staff is...
It's my understanding the staff will then give a presentation, but maybe Mr. Pack, having stood up, has changed the, while you guys were sitting there, was there an idea of how you were going to proceed?
Well, we discussed this earlier, it felt inappropriate that a member of the planning commission speak on behalf of the planning commission. As you recall, in my staff report, I recommended approval, and so I don't see how that's very fair for me to represent the planning commission in this map. And so, if it's all right with the council and the city attorney, that Mr. Pack at least speak on behalf of the planning commission on why they felt that this project, or why they denied this project. The one thing I wanted to say is that, again, I made a mistake on... The one thing I wanted to say is that again, I made a mistake on the address, so when you get to the motion, please substitute the sixty-four eighty-one for the other west, um...
Is it sixty-eight forty-one?
Sixty-four eighty-one.
Sixty-eight forty-one. It's less than sixty-seven hundred west, it's sixty-eight forty-one. Six-eight four-one. Yeah.
Okay, then, I'll go with you, not the county record.
Just to be clear, uh, Larry? Just to be clear, just 'cause, uh, councilmember Hagan couldn't hear the first part.
Um, well, I, I can outline from the count, from the planning commission minutes, uh, why the planning commission felt this project should be denied, or why they denied the subdivision plot. However, in my staff report, I recommended approval of it, and so I do not feel like that I would be the best one to, to talk about the reasons why they, they, they feel it should be denied, it should be, and, and they're very articulate, very, much smarter than me, and so you'd probably wanna hear from them, uh, their, their side of the story.
Thanks for repeating that, I appreciate it. Planning commission?
Thank you, Mayor. David Pack, eighty-two sixty-four Sunny Vista Lane, and to better clarify why I'm here this morning, I'm vice chair of planning commission, and I'm joined tonight by fellow commissioners, uh, Kelvin Green, who moved to deny this, and also Joshua Sikoski, who seconded the motion, so we felt it was most appropriate for the three of us to be here. And we've sectioned out our presentation into three different portions, so if it's okay with you, Mayor, they'll, they'll be speaking briefly, as well after my comments. Thank you. And thank you for your kind comments regarding our work. Uh, we feel, as a planning commission, we're simply here to vet things and make your job easier, and so, I personally am not going to be offended if you find things differently, uh, we just want to make sure that we're offloading you, and dealing with, with issues that can save you some time. And we want to ensure that you know that our, we wanna make sure that the main thing is always the main thing, so we try to have the main thing before us, and the main thing that we want to follow is policy of city council, the general plan, implementing ordinances as written, focusing on applying the criteria. Uh, councilmember McConaughey mentioned earlier, highest and best use, and that's really what we wanna ensure that we're focusing on. What is the highest and best use for any parcel of property that we're looking at? And we felt that the highest and best use in this situation was what the general plan currently designates. Uh, I was able to serve on general plan committee for three years, so anytime we have a, a business item come before us, I'm usually looking at the general plan component specifically. And, uh, Commissioner Sikoski and I served, or actually, Commissioner Sikoski and Commissioner Hanson served this year on designer view committee, Commissioner Heiner and I served on that committee last year, so, so I think we're bringing in, uh, to you some experience that, that hopefully will help in this situation. So I'm grateful that the applicant wants to do business in West Jordan, and I thought that I would just briefly condense an idea from each of the commissioners who voted to deny this application. Um, Commissioner Hanson was concerned that there was only access to the development from seventy-eight hundred south, which is heavily traveled. If you take one hundred fourteen homes, uh, conceivably you'd have double that in cars, and you'd got two hundred twenty-eight cars, plus boats and RVs, and she was also concerned that homes are so similar, uh, that she'd like to see something different, and she mentioned that at the D R C meeting. Empty nesters don't want stairs, there's no place to, uh, to have a lot of parking, she didn't think a playground next to U one-eleven was a safe location. Commissioner Green mentioned that he didn't think this was a planned community, but rather a high-density housing complex, trying to fit in the planned community zone. It doesn't meet the green space limitations, because the code says it should be limited to pedestrian ways, bike paths, equestrian and agricultural uses, and garden spots, and although we like to see buffers, a seventeen-foot wide green space really can't be used for recreational activity, uh, manatee. And he agreed with citizen comments, uh, as Mr. Smith mentioned tonight, that trade-offs for high density to get amenities, even though things change, when those amenities are taken away, they break a social contract with the neighborhood. Commissioner Sikoski felt that whether or not they were promised, the city should provide a happy, healthy living environment to residents that are currently there. Commissioner Quinney mentioned that at this point, it would be good to stop adding homes and start taking care of the people who already live there, and that we should hold on to this property until a commercial development can take care of the residents. Uh, basically wanting to ensure that we don't jump the gun, to be patient. Commissioner Green, uh, said we should make good public policies that take care of existing areas. If West Jordan continues to be an infill city, then we won't have the infrastructure and resources to support it. Uh, we would remain a bedroom community, and as we found it, especially in this, where it's not mandated that commercial go in as the last phase, traditionally that would be the last thing to go in, and then it would be significantly limited in terms of options for what would possibly go in there. And at this point, I think it would be best to have Commissioner Sikoski come up and share some of his thoughts, if that's all right with you, Mayor.
That's right.
Thank you for your time.
Joshua Sikoski, yeah, eighty-twenty-nine South Burry Road. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the, uh, council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk on this. Um, one of our major concerns that was brought up in the planning commission meeting also was that density is not our enemy, it's more design, that's, that's the problem with this, this unit. Um, we've had other, uh, high-density developments come in adjacent to this property, kitty-corner to this property, and all of those units, um, we've, as a city, required them to provide amenities. When you have, uh, a high-density development, you really need to provide the people that live in that development with enough amenity to kinda make up for packing them in there. Um, and so what we've done with the other developments is we've required them to provide usable open space, um, amenities for the homeowners to make it a, a nice area to live. And one of the reasons that this was shot down in our planning commission meeting was that we don't see any of those amenities in this, in this area. Uh, an individual can't use a seventeen-foot wide drive strip as an open space. Um, and then our other concern that was brought up in the planning commission meeting was safety of the area. Um, obviously, we're shrinking the, uh, the commercial, but the access, as far as pedestrian access, um, to the, the surrounding amenities and shopping and such, there really is no pedestrian access to any of those. It's not provided in the plan, um, and it just presents kind of an unsafe and ugly environment for this development. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelvin Green, seventy-seven, Kelvin Green, seventy-seven oh seven Battlefield Cove. Uh, the last, just a couple of, of reminders here, uh, as we, uh, rejected the subdivision plan, this is a planned community zone, it requires a fifteen percent open space, that, that this, the planned community zone has a very specific, uh, utility for that, uh, or definition of what's supposed to be there, including pedestrian spaces and those kind of things, and this subdivision does not have that. If you'll notice, this subdivision plan does not have any sidewalks, uh, when specifically addressed, that they have the drive, driveways, the walk between the homes, but there is no, uh, there is no sidewalk, there is no, uh, as Mr., uh, because Commissioner Sikoski said, there is no, uh, pathways, pedestrian, those kind of things, and you see that the green space really isn't usable, doesn't meet, so when we rejected it, we rejected it, this subdivision plan, based on the fact that it does not meet the specific definition of the PC zone, and it did not meet criteria four, uh, in the staff report, and, uh, I will tell you that based on my understanding of city ordinance, uh, for the appeal to be overturned, we'd have to be proven that we made some sort of legal or factual mistake here, and I would add, tell, I would, uh, express to the city council, I don't think we made a legal or factual mistake here. The, the subdivision plan does not meet the planet, the, the PC zone, and so that's why we, uh, denied it, and also urge you to also deny the appeal, because it does not meet the intent of the zoning code of West Jordan City.
Josh Sikoski again. Um, I failed to mention, uh, our reasons for criteria four. Um, criteria four says the proposed amendment will not unduly impact the adequacy of public service and, uh, facilities intended to serve the subject zoning area and property than would otherwise be needed without the proposed change, such as, but not limited to, police and fire protection, water, sewer, and roadways. Where this was previously looked at as a community commercial area, the impact on this piece of land was much lower, um, where the community that currently lives in this area would be using this piece of land, um, and not really adding to the amount of, of hard use on this land, whereas if you add a hundred and fourteen homes to this area, you're now adding a hundred and fourteen families to this piece of land, which will have much more of an impact on this space. Um, and that's why we, uh, why we found criteria four lacking. Thank you.
Thanks. You have an opportunity for the applicant to rebut? You have up to five minutes.
So, quickly, I, um, I'm gonna touch on a couple items, but I think there's some technical items where the, the definition of the PC zone, I believe that staff, uh, I, I would like, I would hope they would be able to defend or, or explain why they thought it was in compliance. We, we wanna make sure that we, we came here with, uh, their support, but their support would not be, uh, we don't think we would've arrived at that support without complying with the things that have been just noted. Traffic, um, if you, if you, if we were to see the highest and best use of the proposed retail, um, there would be more, I would believe more automobiles, and the traffic issues would be, um, minimally a trade-off, uh, with what is being proposed today, um, tonight. The open space, as per code, there's a fifteen percent requirement for open space, and this project has an access of fifteen percent. There's more, uh, open space, uh, than, uh, than the fifteen percent that's required. You could eliminate, if you'd like, uh, some of the buffer, where you put the, the green space in between the, uh, areas where the apartments are, and there, but I, we thought that aesthetically, uh, we feel that it meets the city standard for open space, as well provides greater, uh, aesthetics to the property. Um, time to be patient for the area, that was one of the comments made about being patient. I think this parcel has sat for sixteen years, and I think that, um, there has been, um, I don't know if I could call it patient, there hasn't been, there hasn't been a patient effort by the, the past landowner to see this developed, there's been a, uh, a lot of hard work done, but, uh, land banking this parcel for an indefinite amount of time, um, it does, it is a policy decision and one you have to weigh, but, um, I do think that it's one that's, that, um, you ought to weigh heavily, whether that's, uh, that whether twenty years or something is something that defines patience for this area. I would argue that there's been a lot of work, exhaustive work done, to, um, to make this parcel a success. Um, the sidewalks, there are sidewalks, I'm in front of the homes, as well as the, uh, the major corridors, I don't think that this, uh, this might not highlight it as well, but maybe we could, we could show where the, the sidewalks, we, we, we do the large streets as well as, yes, thank you, there we go. And so this, this is a walkable community, and it does have the sidewalks, uh, to make it so. Um, the undue impact, also remember this was part of, and it's been noted by the public as well, there was a master plan or a development agreement with multiple parcels. Uh, this is not the first application that Urban Chase has brought before this council for consideration. We had parcels that were, uh, zoned for apartments, that we zoned, uh, for, uh, single-family homes, uh, thirty-acre lots. So if you look at this, it holistically is, has been asked by members of the community, we would think, we would argue that the, uh, there is not an undue impact with the, uh, the change in use here, and that some of the past efforts, uh, on other parcels that would've been, had a much higher density, um, that impact has been mitigated or has been lessened. And so net-net, we believe that this new proposal does not, uh, create an undue, uh, impact to this, to this area. There's probably some technical things that have been discussed by your planning commissioners that I am not, uh, well-versed in, but would hope that if there is, um, that opinion from staff, that they'd express it as well.
Thank you. City attorney, um, as I understand it now, the mayor calls for a motion from the council members.
That's correct. The way the rule reads, it indicates that following the presentation, the mayor should call for a motion, and the city council may, oh, excuse me, the mayor shall declare the hearing closed, then call for a motion, and the city council may, in any lawful way, make their appropriate finding and ruling. The way this rule has been written, and the way I'm interpreting it, there's not a lot of room for, at this point, your traditional, make a motion and then have discussion. I'd like to draw the analogy that you would see often in a court of appeals or a supreme court, that when you go and watch those courts perform their, their judicial role, they hear arguments from the two sides, they don't necessarily then turn to one another and start debating the issue. You, you just don't see court of appeals and supreme court justices arguing with one another. So if at this point, the council wishes to take an under advisement, I think that's the purpose of the third option that you've been given. Move and vote to take the appeal under advisement pending a final decision. Otherwise, I believe the intent behind this ordinance is to require the motion to take place tonight within a vote. As indicated, to deny the appeal or move and vote to grant the appeal with appropriate remedies.
Okay, thank you. I declare the hearing closed, and now I turn to the council for motion.
Mayor, I just have a clarifying question for attorney.
Oh, please.
Um, if the appeal is approved, is the subdivision plot approved? Or is, does that just reopen the discussion about the subdivision plot?
That's something, in fact Duncan and I have been discussing at length, and if I can just ask Duncan to clarify, 'cause his articulation of it was much better than mine in this instance, 'cause that's a very good question.
Yeah, just looking at state law, uh, in, which is the Land Use Development and Management Act, it's section ten dash nine-eight dash seven oh one, uh, gives a little bit more, as well as seven oh eight, but it, if you look at section seven oh eight, sub one, it says a decision of an appeal authority takes effect on the date, um, and then sub two, or on the date when the decision is made, and then sub, section two says, a written decision constitutes a final decision. So if you, uh, if the motion passed, uh, um, to overturn the planning commission, then that would be a final decision, would not require any further action. Uh, the same would be true if, uh, if you upheld the planning commission, then that would also be a final action. So, um, I would recommend that in any motion you make, you focus not as much on granting or denying the appeal, as saying whether you're upholding the planning commission, uh, or whether you're overruling the planning commission.
Thank you. Want a follow-up question?
So, again, just to clarify this, so, a motion by whoever can be made to either deny or, uh, affirm the planning zoning's decision? That's all we're deciding?
Right.
Can there be a substitute motion as a, if somebody claims it?
No, the substitute motion would not be in order on, in this situation, so, uh...
So does a first come, first suit serve on the motion?
Well, I mean, if a motion doesn't pass, then somebody can make one of those other motions. There's three different options for the, for the motion, and as the city attorney indicated, you'd wanna make some kind of specific findings in your motion as to why you're upholding or overruling the planning commission. And in particular, state law refers to finding, uh, an error. You know, an error doesn't necessarily mean that, that a major mistake was made, but it's just, maybe it's your policy... maybe it's your policy for that area or that maybe they didn't anticipate, but you have to have at least one or two reasons why you're either overruling or upholding the decision of the planning commission.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Those rulings under advisement, I move that we uphold the ruling of the planning commission, uphold or confirm the ruling of the planning commission, finding that the criteria were not met for the approval of the subdivision plot. Finding that the criteria were not sufficiently met for approval of the subdivision plot.
Right, right. Second. I have a motion by councilmember Jacob and a second by councilmember Nichols. Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Can I get a point of clarification, Mayor? So yes on this, is denial of the appeal.
Of the subdivision plot.
Of the appeal.
Correct.
No, is the motion dies.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Mayor Roff?
No.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Haga?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
No.
Vote fails two to five.
So the obvious legal effect is you haven't taken any action yet, but Mr. Mayor, another option would still be in order.
Another motion would be in order.
Just again, point of clarification, so I get this motion correct, we're in a different ballgame here. So the planning commission has denied this preliminary plan and we're going to override. If I made motion to override the planning zoning's decision, that would be my motion.
Right, and if that motion passed, then the subdivision plot would be approved.
So move.
You have to have a reason.
Finding.
A finding. Was it based on interpretation or what?
So we have to have a finding as far as what?
It could be a policy reason, it could be something in the general plan, just any reason for why you're making that motion.
The all-state coupled that I've noticed, first of all, the criteria set for the planning commission is set as policy by the council. I know that's come before us many times and we've changed certain texts to try to massage and make that direct, the planning and zoning the direct way. We appreciate the efforts on this, but I would say the criteria is a guide, it's a map, and so that would be one of my sightings is we're following that too stringent. The other one is, we've already heard as testimony from the other side that there's no sidewalks, and I can see along seventy-eight hundred, the traditional serpentine sidewalk. I can see sidewalks in front of the street and I'm ninety-nine percent sure that we require curb and gutter, not sure if we require sidewalks in a development like this, but, so just some of the facts that have not been disclosed would be reason to deny the, or override. Override the planning and zoning.
A second motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Mayor Roff?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Haga?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Vote passes, supported to be in favor.
Make motion for a five-minute recess.
I move for a five-minute recess.
Second.
Motion by councilmember McConaughey, second by councilmember Burton, discussion of motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Five minutes only, please.
No.
I'm going to move to the next business item, business item nine A. Typically, we would go back to the consent items, but the applicant has waited patiently through the entire meeting, so we will do nine A first. Business item nine A, discussion and possible action regarding an adjustment by reducing the transportation impact fee assessment to the Jordan Landing Entertainment Village application. David?
Yes, the prescribed method by which these developers can ask for some consideration on the impact fees is to make an application, to submit a study, to give substance or some kind of information that defends their, their application, and then it is up to the city council to make that decision, determination. Four Square has submitted, as you may see in your packet, a study by Atrans Transport Engineering. Staff went ahead and had our own consultant, Titler and Vice, review this study. Titler and Vice came back and said, we agree with the study and confirm the findings. And so that is what is before the council tonight. So at this point, I'd like to turn the time over to Dan Melich to address this issue, if it is appropriate.
I just had a question, make sure I understand. So they hired a consultant and then we went back to our consultant both and they agreed that this was justified?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, it would be in order for a short presentation.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, staff and members of public here this evening, Dan Melich, Four Square Properties, seven-five-three-three South Center View Court here in West Jordan. We agree with staff's findings and determination of the staff report. Titler and Vice is the city's independent consultant. They are also the ones that recently completed the impact fee study for the city dated September twenty-sixteen. We believe that everything I've heard here tonight at this meeting, talked about economic development, growing business here in this city, keeping buildings from becoming vacant, attracting new businesses to this city, all of these things, Mayor and council, are the reason we're here before you with this request. This money goes right back into this project. We are forty-two percent of the retail sales tax in the city of West Jordan is generated by Jordan Landing. That amounted to six point eight-four million dollars in twenty-fifteen. In twenty-fifteen, the city also realized over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in property tax money from Jordan Landing. These are large contributions to the city, the city has benefited from these contributions, we benefited from this relationship as well, you know, it's your symbiotic relationship. The city's been great for us and we believe we've been a good neighbor and a good partner with the city. Agree with staff's recommendation, agree with the independent consultant's recommendation, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question regarding the movie theaters. We heard earlier that, and in this study, it says there's existing five thousand two-hundred-and-ninety seats and proposed two-hundred, two thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-four seats for a change of two thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-six seats. Correct me if I'm wrong, those seats have already been removed, this isn't proposed, right?
That was completed in October, right?
Okay, so the study dated November seventeenth, then, that says existing fifty-two-ninety seats is inaccurate.
The, yeah, that's correct, that's an inaccurate statement. Theater was constructed with that many and then they were reduced, as I mentioned earlier, changed out to the lounge seating.
Right.
Completed in October.
The baby recliners and everything, yeah, those are cool. All right, that's all I have at this moment, thanks.
Okay.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, so my question is, I'm familiar with that area, the restaurants there in front of the theaters, and how many businesses or sites are there in the existing buildings? And then how many different sites, obviously there'll be some fluctuation, it's ninety-three-thousand square feet of new space, but how does that relate, I mean, we have eight former tenants and we're going to have sixteen new tenants, what's kind of the?
That's a fair question. The delineation of the spaces, the commercial spaces that were.
Um, the, the restaurants there in front of the theaters, and how, how many businesses or, um, sites are there in the existing buildings? And then how many different sites? Obviously, there'll be some fluctuation. It's ninety-three thousand square feet of new space. But how does that relate? I mean, we have eight former tenants and we're gonna have sixteen new tenants. What's, what's kind of the...
Well, it's a fair question. The, the delineation of the spaces, the commercial spaces that we're developing, um, can be varied. Uh, they could be one big user taking up a fifty thousand square foot building. That building, same building could be split up into ten different spaces of five thousand. So to, to give you an accurate number of, of how many, uh, would be there, I would say we're looking on the order of forty to fifty new users in the Entertainment Village area.
Thank you.
Just, just so I'm clear, um, when the theater was originally built, is the seats that you, that are represented in the study? And the impact fees were paid on that building at the time that it was constructed? And these are renovations that have been made since then?
That's correct.
And one other question. It's about, you said about a forty million dollar investment from, uh, Jordan Lan- uh, Jordan Landing's making on the plaza area?
In the Plaza Entertainment Village area, that's correct. It's forty million dollar.
Alright, thank you. I think that's everything, Dan.
Thank you.
Back to the council for Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you. Just have a quick question for staff, if I may. Um, now I'm trying to remember exactly what that was. It was on the, um, on our Tischler and Bice study, the, oh no, here's the question. The question was if the movie theater seat reduction was the only renovation happening, would we be considering a reduction in impact fees based on that alone?
Um... I, I don't know without speaking of the council.
It would be significant.
I, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Uh, the reason I ask that, and this will be, I guess, part of my discussion, is the figure five in our study on page three of the study has a table, right, vehicle trips on average weekday, and the, the whole point of reducing vehicle trips is based on the movie theater and the, and the change in seats.
Yes.
So if the change in seats by itself is not enough to justify a reduction in impact fees, the other factors in here justify the impact fees. And I'm not saying we shouldn't do something nice because, you know, forty million dollars and nice big economic development, all that stuff is good stuff. And so I'm not saying we shouldn't look at this. I'm just saying that the justification given in this study is based on something that already happened, and we wouldn't have considered, uh, an adjustment to impact fees on, by itself.
I, I can't speak to the timing issues. We rely on our consultant for those, to verify what has been submitted by, uh, the developer. And so we rely on Tischler and Bice as our expert, if you will, to give us the opinion on the impact of the proposed changes. And albeit some of the changes that have already occurred, those do have an impact on traffic.
Right, but considered by themselves.
Whether the timing is yesterday or today or tomorrow.
Right.
Of the, the changes, the impact is what is looked at by Tischler and Bice. Does that increase traffic? Does that not increase traffic, uh, wear and tear on the roads?
Okay, so as a follow-up to that, then, how, uh, uh, or at what point does a renovation, uh, does, does a renovation or a change to an existing building that paid impact fees X number of years ago, does that always justify us relooking at it and, and, and adjusting what impact fees were already paid? Because this, the impact fees for the theater were based on the theater with five thousand seats.
Right.
You know, fifteen years ago when it was built, right? And those have been paid and they've been spent, and we were very grateful. Thank you very much.
That's right.
The roads are happier because of it. But, um... But that impact fee's already been paid, so remodeling the theater or remodeling some other building, if, uh, if another, let's say a big box store wants to, that's, you know, dying, wants to subdivide into fifteen different smaller retail pads, that'll be an impact fee, but that building's impact was already paid for fifteen years ago. So I'm just wondering, is there ever a time when we stop looking at the impact fees that were already paid?
Um, those are, those are taken into consideration on certain, certain fees like, uh, sewer and water, because that's based on meter sizes and numbers. Um, and we don't arbitrarily just look at impact fees on everything. We, we assess those as, as we see the plans. However, the, the process to appeal or ask us for consideration is triggered by, um, a request from the, this, uh, applicant.
An applicant, right.
So that's, that's how this came about. We don't arbitrarily just say, "Hey, let's take a look at this and reduce the fees." That's done, uh, by request from the applicant.
Right. I guess what I'm looking at is, is I'm looking at this proposal and saying that the existing development generates five thousand three hundred and thirty-three average weekday vehicle trips. And using the proposed development plan, the reconfigured Entertainment Village generates three thousand eight hundred and fifty-five weekday vehicle trips, a decrease of fourteen hundred and seventy-nine trips. I don't think we'd be investing forty million dollars to bring in fourteen hundred and seventy-nine fewer customers. Uh, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I, now, I agree that the theater is cooler now, and maybe you sell it out better, maybe just take a toss more, whatever it is. That's, that's cool, but that's done. That's already, that's money in the bank or money out of the bank, as it were. It's already done. I don't see that decrease in vi- in vehicle trips being able to figure into this other stuff that's happening around it, which would be a net increase in vehicle trips. Of one hundred and eighty-seven for we- for restaurants and nine hundred and seventy-one for retail. Um... So I'm not, I'm not saying that something shouldn't be done here. I'm just saying that the, the material that we've been given to base our decision on is based on an admitted inaccuracy to the numbers that are in here. So, um, I would just, I, I'm not, I'm not sure what to do with that.
I'd, I'd like to just be clear, because I've been working on this for six or eight months, that the improvements to the theater would not have been made had Jordan Landing not committed themselves to doing the upgrade of the plaza. I don't think it was ever to the degree that, uh, I'm sorry, I can't let you talk, Dan. I closed it. Uh, I don't think it was ever to the degree that it is designed to now. In fact, it was started out at twenty million. It has doubled that since, since they first started talking about it. But as part of their agreement with Cinemark to do that upgrade, that six million dollar upgrade, was a commitment to do the plaza area, at least the plaza area. Now, I'm not gonna comment on some of the new buildings and some of that, but that much I've been in discussions, and so has David Oka been in discussions with Jordan Landing on this. So I want to just be clear that that's, and we've discussed it, as you know, uh, among the council before as well.
Alright.
Yes?
The reduction in seating has been triggered by the latest renovations or technology of, of theaters, as you know. Um, with the lounge seating, it requires a lot more space, hence less seats. So that's, that's where that comes from.
Yeah, I get, I get that. That's not part of my question. My part of, my question is, we're talking about transportation impact fees and why they should be reduced, and we're reducing them based on
Less traffic.
Less traffic, right, which is based on, entirely on those seats being changed out.
Right.
I'm saying that all, all of the other, all of the other impacts that are coming in based on the restaurant, the retail, everything else, isn't that positive impact?
Correct.
Okay. Do, I just want that to be, that's...
Yes, sir.
Just so I can be clear, we don't know what the two consultants used, the two professional consultants used in their determination to do it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, mayor. Uh... I, I don't want to extend the conversation too much further, but I do want to suggest that, um, while I appreciate the questions to what it would be if you were to isolate those seats, I, I don't think that can be taken solo. Um, I think if... I, I'm thinking about the movie theater that we got in I G at the Redwood Road. Um, how long that went without any upgrades, and you saw that continue to deteriorate because there wasn't any additional maintenance, any additional upkeep, any retrofitting that happened there uh, for quite some time, and then we saw the, the large retailer that was there on that corner disappear, and now we, we, we've got a lot of issues with that area because there wasn't any investment put in there. Um, the plan, I, from my understanding, the plan of Jordan Landing was never to just do the movie theater seats and then stop. It was part of the bigger picture. And I don't think our timing of hearing this issue sh- should penalize them uh, because they didn't put plans to improve their portion of our city on hold, um, until we heard this issue. So I, I really don't want to do that. The other thing that this really underscores is the need that we have to really examine how we handle infill development or redevelopment. Uh, we don't have a good way to address this as a city as, as a whole. Uh, we have a number of, um, parcels on the older east side of the city that, when it comes time to redevelop or infill, they're trying to, the, our, our current code holds them to the same standards as the west side of the city that's being developed for the first time. And, and those two aren't really compatible. So we find ourselves in new territory when we're looking at a, a, a major artery of the city's, a major component of the city's vitality here in Jordan Landing, trying to redevelop and build that. We don't really have a good mechanism to evaluate and measure. So I'm grateful we do have the ability to go back and take a, uh, take under consideration the information provided by these consultants, because I don't think that redevelopment and new development are really, uh, equitable. They're, they're not the same thing. Anyway, that, 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 that's the underlying crux of, uh, of, of the perspective I'm taking. This can't be viewed the same as new development, and the, the movie theater seats really can't be taken out of the equation anyway, just because it was off by six weeks from when we have our discussion. So, thank you, mayor.
Thanks.
Just one follow-up question, if I may.
Please.
Um, the proposal or the, 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 uh, recommendation is for a reduction in the transportation impact fee by ninety-six point two percent. And I've looked through the studies, both studies several times, and I'm still trying to figure out how exactly it came up with ninety-six point two percent.
I can explain that if you'd like, over here, sorry, David Bricky.
Thanks.
Right at the very front of the report, you'll indicate that the trip impact as a result of the increase is three point eight percent on the weekends. That three point eight is deducted out of one hundred percent to get to that amount. So that's how that calculation was, uh, determined. And that was after lengthy discussions both with the engineers, our office. There has to be a legal justification or basis for making such a claim, and that was the one I was the most comfortable with. If I have to stand in front of a judge and explain this, at least I have a statistical number I can attach to why.
Okay, I, I think I found that, so an increase in weekday traffic of one percent, weekend increase of nine percent, total average of three point eight percent compared to traffic volumes existed prior to the site rebuild.
It's, um, in that very first, in the background discussion.
Yep.
One, two, three, it's the four, five, six paragraph down, increases of three point eight compared to the traffic volumes which existed prior to the site redevelopment.
Exactly what I was just reading. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I move to make an adjustment by reducing the transportation impact fee by ninety-six point two percent based on, upon the traffic signal warranty study produced by A-Trans Engineering as reviewed by the city's impact fee consultant, Tischler and Bice.
Second.
A motion by Mayor Rolfe, second by Councilmember Hega. Discussion of the motion. Let's vote with him. Oh, excuse me. Let's vote.
Councilmember Hega?
Yes. Vote, yes.
Yes? Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Connehan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
The vote passes, so it's in paper.
Okay, we got fifteen minutes, uh, and four items to go. Which orders the council wanna... I believe that the item that I had placed on can be summed up in one, uh, direction from the council. I personally wanna, I don't think we have time to discuss everyone's, um, issues that are gonna be brought forward in strategic plan. I just wanted to explain strategic plan is set up to be a retreat, where the council only meets and discusses goals for the future year. And, uh, we involve staff with their directives as they come about them as a majority of the council. Um, it was my opinion that one day was sufficient, and then I know there was discussion that it proved two days. So I guess the only issue I want to get clear today is, do we need two days or just the twenty-seventh? And then everybody can bring, and we'll discuss. I wanted to give the staff time to react to what the majority of the council wanted to, um, set as goals, just four or five that are achievable. And I, I know there's some dissension on, uh, it just seems like we get discussing fifty things on a two-day thing, and nothing ever ends up getting done because we don't refine it to, uh, find an amount of goals. Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, mayor. I agree with exactly what you just said. We get talking about too many things, and that's why, I believe, I was under the impression we were gonna discuss this tonight, was to preload that conversation with our agreed-upon, we're gonna hash this out tonight and, and kind of come to the total of which five goals we want as a council. I don't think we're gonna do that in ten minutes, considering it took about three hours in our last retreat. Um, I like having it on the agenda before the, uh, before the retreat, but we're selling ourselves short if we think we're gonna do it in ten minutes. Um, we're not going to accomplish the goal that you just laid out in ten minutes. I don't think we're gonna agree upon five goals in ten minutes.
We won't.
Um... So I'm not sure what action we want to take based on that. I would love to agree upon five goals, but it's gonna take us a good conversation. And because of that, I still think we need two days until I hear a good reason why we don't.
Councilmember Burton?
Well, the two days that we had talked about.
Thank you. The two days that we had talked about, I had mentioned in our previous meeting that I committed to OSI at noon and Los Edge Front Regional Council meeting in the afternoon. So I'm not available the afternoon, um, Thursday. So I would like to be available for Friday only. However, if we need a second, I'd be happy to do a week later Friday, if we could resolve some of that together. However, if the council overrides that and wants to do two days, I would go for a half a day on Thursday, then a full day on Friday.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, mayor. Um, a little bit different on my train of thoughts here. Um, there are a couple things that I want to discuss, just us as a council, uh, during retreat that are not necessarily goals, but to see if there's a desire from the council to pursue these, um, items throughout the year. Uh, one of the items I want to talk about, again, just us as a council, is a potential art center. Um, I'd like to talk about potentially putting a question of, uh, property tax line item for parks on, uh, ballot, um, see if the council wants to discuss that. Also, it's been four years since we changed the, uh, how, how do I word it? We, we changed the expectations for the role of the mayor, uh, four years ago. I think it would be good to have a little bit of a follow-up conversation to see, um, if we need to make adjustments prior to the next, uh, election. Those aren't necessarily goals, but those are things that I would like to discuss. I think, uh, fifteen to twenty minutes for each of those would be more than enough time to see, is this something we want to have further conversation or, uh, have a workshop about later? I don't want to go into this thinking that we're gonna resolve everything. I see this really more us setting the agenda for the next year. Um, whereas in the past, we've sat down and we've had, uh, long, long presentations from staff showing what goes on in the various departments. Uh, that can be provided to us at any time. I, I view this as more us discussing what actions we need to take throughout the course of the year and figure out what we want to put on our agenda. So I think we can accomplish it in one day. Um, the other thing I want to bring up is there's been some conversation about potentially inviting, uh, citizens to, uh, have plenty of citizen comment time. We have that in each council meeting. This is really the only time that we have without a formal, wi- wi- without a uh, very rigid setting to, to speak about what we want to do. We've had plenty of time either throughout our campaigning process, through what we hear from, uh, citizen comments in this meeting, or what we hear, uh, as we're out with our neighbors. Uh, we have plenty of time to hear what the residents' concerns are. This is the one time for us to decide what actions we want to take, so... This is the one time for us to decide what actions we want to take, so, um, I, I would prefer not to have, uh, a significant amount of time for residents' engagement, rather just an actual council retreat, council workshop. Thank you.
Councilmember Hega?
Um, you know what? The consensus of the council is okay as far as two days. I would just, I, I will only be able to attend one day, and so if they do do a two-day event, um, then maybe the major consensus decision-making, we could, you know, tie down to one day. You know, everybody can share their vision the first day, if, if that's your will. But as far as I think the discussion, you know, on some of the ideas you just talked about, and some of the ideas some of the other council members, if we can come together and actually formulate direction on one day, that's all I would ask, 'cause I wanna be able to attend one day. Thanks, Mayor.
So, what does the majority want to do? It doesn't matter to me. I'm, I'm gonna be there both days, no matter what, either here or there, so it doesn't matter to me. I guess either downstairs or upstairs, doesn't matter to me, both days, so. What does the council want to do?
I, I would move that we do a Friday, and then at the end of that meeting on Friday, if we determine we need to hold another day, we schedule it while we're there together, so.
Everybody in favor of that?
Sure.
Okay. It'll be on the twenty-seventh, then, if you know what I mean? Okay.
Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, is there gonna be another time where we help staff know what we wanna discuss?
We don't have any time for that. Well, I guess we can discuss it again on the twenty-eighth.
I'm just wondering, 'cause I, I thought the, the goal of your, of your agenda item was to come up with some goals to get them working on it, and all we did was come up with a day.
Yeah, it was. I, but that's what I planned on, but again, we're down to seven minutes now, and, uh...
We could've extended that by motion if we had to, but again, we can either spend the time now, or we can spend the time on the twenty-seventh, okay, or, and it's, it's only time.
I'll put it back on the thirty-eleventh as the last item on the agenda, and if we...
How about the first? Let's get it done. Let's do this.
Um, the eleventh, as of now, and I think it's gonna stay that way, is very late.
But do we have one on the first?
No. The eleventh is the first one.
I won't.
No, the eleventh is the first one.
That's the same.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah.
Okay, so, we'll bring, uh, put it on the last item on the agenda for the eleventh to discuss, um, so at least give staff some time to... Okay, um, we have three items left, um. I believe we have staff waiting on item C, so I'd like to do that one next, if there's no opposition to it.
Item C.
C passed, or...
Excuse me.
E?
This red paper right next to you. E. Item E, approve the City of West Jordan Employee Handbook as revised on December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. John Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, you have before you the, uh, a few documents there. There's a document that outlines all of the changes that are being proposed, and then you have the, uh, handbook in its entirety as well. If you have any questions, I would love to answer those.
I don't have any questions, but I had a comment, um, the area where it says that, I had it marked, and I lost it now.
Page six of the electronic or five of the printed? Is that the one you're looking at? Communication protocol?
Yes. Would you like to, we discussed this earlier, we do.
Ha- happily, thank you, Mayor. A- employees must talk to their needs supervisor when they have questions and or concerns. Supervisors should then discuss the concerns with department heads to resolve the question and or concern. Department head may in turn consult with the city manager as needed. Should an employee wish to speak with an elected official of the city, she or he is encouraged on first call of the chain of command, but is free to speak with an elected official at any time. Final decisions regarding questions and or concerns is the responsibility and obligation of the city manager.
Thank you for reading that, since I couldn't find it, but, um, I would like that stricken from the handbook, that would be my opinion. Everything else is fine for me.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. There, there are a couple other places that I have questions with and things where I'd like to see some tweaking, however, I don't want those minor modifications to hold up the work that's already been done. So, I would be happy to support, um, a, a motion to approve this without that top section, um, a- at this point, but there, there's still some things I'd like to look at, Mayor.
Are there any questions for you, Mayor? Thanks, John. Okay, so, Councilmember McConaughey?
So, I would move to approve consent item six E with the, uh, condition of part removal of that communication protocol section on, that, that's currently on page five.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, and a second by Councilmember Burton. I'd like to add a friendly amendment if you would accept it, and that would be to, rather than the start date for the public safety portion to be December thirty-first, which misses Christmas, roll it back to when the council, um, first, uh, voted seven oh in favor of...
October twenty-sixth.
Roll it back to that.
Two days before he broke my foot.
Yeah. Mayor, I would be very happy to, uh, allow that or accept that amendment. Um, that, that was my original intent, however, my understanding is we also need a budget amendment to go along with that, so I was gonna follow this up with another, um, motion that we give direction to staff to prepare a budget amendment to cover those retroactive changes for our next meeting.
How's your, what's the original motion, then? And, uh, comments?
Well, I, I, actually, I prefer your amendment, because then it includes, it, it doesn't leave any variability as to whether or not the budget amendment's part of it or not. Um, we'll, we'll stop the direction to do the budget amendment, but there's no question as to the intent of council, so staff will be wondering until the next meeting whether or not this will be made retroactive, so...
So, you accept the friendly amendment?
I would, I would accept the amendment, which basically makes my motion read as approved consent item six E with removal of the communication protocol and making the effective date retroactive to October twenty...
Six.
Twenty-sixth.
Yep.
In fact, you know what? I'm gonna remove that. I'll, I'll, I'm, I'm gonna remove the exact date and just say effective to the date where the changes...
Were approved.
Were, were put into effect.
Still second?
I, yes, I...
A motion by Councilmember McConaughey, second by Councilmember Burton, discussion of the motion.
Clarification, that included your striking that section? Thank you.
Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hega?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in favor.
All right, so, Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, with that, um, I would then move that we give direction to staff to return at our, the next council meeting, uh, with a budget amendment to cover the changes needed for those retroactive adjustments.
This, I'm tired of interrupt once again, but Mr. Gardner and I are just wanting to clarify, those changes are related to the financial requirements of meeting those expectations, nothing else.
Correct.
Because we were concerned, we were wanting all the changes to be retroactive, back to the previous dates that have been already suggested in this handbook. You wanna make it just...
The primary concern is the city staff who ended up working on holidays that would have otherwise been compensated more, but during this short period were not fully compensated. Those are the folks that we want to discuss. I don't know that that's restricted to just public safety, but that's, tha- that's the intent, to compensate any city staff who would've been impacted during that short period.
So, the holiday time, not any overtime issues, just the holiday time is primarily what the, this concern is?
Holiday time.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, you have a motion now, uh...
To direct staff to bring back the budget amendment so we can accomplish the modifications?
Yes.
Uh, what date is that gonna be effective then? Is it October twenty-sixth?
I don't know the exact date, but...
I'm pretty sure that's...
The, the motion was leaving it as to the date that, that the initial changes went into effect, so if we do some research and find out the date that we mentioned here is off, it shouldn't impact.
Bill, it is the twenty-sixth, but I'll do, I'll get you to set a minutes, that section, so that you have that to verify the date, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, now, go back to the motion.
So, the motion was to give direction to staff to prepare a budget amendment for our next meeting to cover the financial impact of making the holiday pay retroactive to that, that October date.
Chris, with the no-seen requirements, we'll need to do that on the twenty-fifth, since it's a budget amendment?
Oh. Okay, then, instead of the next council meeting, the next practical council meeting.
Thank you.
Have a motion?
No, the motion's a practical.
I'll second the motion. Uh, second by Mayor Rolfe. Discussion of the motion? Let's vote.
Oh, let's see, let's go up here. Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hega?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Councilmember Jacob?
Mayor, I move to extend the meeting long enough to consider six A, because we have to appoint these people before their terms take effect on January first.
You have a motion? By Councilmember Jacob, second. Second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion of the motion?
Mayor? Agenda item six D, the revised uniform fee schedule and impact fee schedule for twenty-seventeen, do we need to do that tonight as well?
Well, I think the question is, do we need, do we need to do that tonight? It's not tied into this one to extend the meeting.
Well, the, the, the mo- the motion to extend was to consider that one item. Do we, so, we wanted to just have one?
I can consider, we can consider both if you want to. I'm, I'm open to that. I'll amend my motion, consider for, to read, I move to extend the meeting past ten APM, or AM, ten PM to consider items, consent items A and B. And then we can go.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jacob, a second by Councilmember Anderson. All in five, favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, have consent item A, six A, approve resolution sixteen dash one nine three, confirming the appointment of members to serve on various city committees.
If there's more, uh, uh, clarification, as far as, it's not about the people being appointed, but I'm reading this item, and, excuse me, um, I see that, it's my understanding that we appoint in sequence with the council, David.
David?
So, I need some clarification on this.
Yeah, just, uh, Mr. Palace is texting me, so I'm trying to answer my boss.
So, if you notice, there's been appointments by a former council member, um, and it's my understanding that we go through a, a, you know, sequence of council members making appointments. Has that changed since, uh, and then we're asking a former council member to appoint these folks? Is that a typo? Have you read A?
No, I did not realize.
It says, vote, uh, a person which I think should be on this committee, reappointed by former council member.
Recommended by you.
Yeah, recommended by you.
Well, one says appoint, approved by you.
If Councilmember Rice was part of that selection process, even though she is no longer now part of the council, recognition of her participation would be appropriate. We could put that, a- again, an asterisk similar to we've done in the past, indicating Councilman, Member Rice's departure on the fifteenth, uh, to clarify that, but it would be fine to have her name there.
Move to approve.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Hega, second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion of the motion? Jane, on the vote?
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hega?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Item six D, approve resolution sixteen dash one nine six, adopting the revised uniform fee schedule and impact fees for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen.
I'm not gonna make a comment, just wanna express my vote on this. Thanks, Mayor.
I, I do have a question on this. With the... With the impact fee changes that are listed on there, I see the impact fee changes are higher for single family and lower for multi-family, and I think that sends a message that we don't want to send out, saying we prefer multi-family over single family. And I would like to keep those where they are right now, keep them the same instead of making that change on those two.
I have the same feeling, um, but, uh, it's been recommended to me that there'd be a challenge on there. Uh, we don't have, because we have the study, uh, to support it, even though the study shows it should be...
So, we should not have accepted that study? You know, which we're gonna do at our last council meeting?
Councilmember Jacob?
Move to approve resolution sixteen dash one ninety-six.
Another motion by Councilmember Jacob? Motion to die for lack of second. Councilmember Nichols?
Move to approve, uh, resolution sixteen dash, the ninety-six? One ninety-six, plus the impact fees.
Second. Another motion by Councilmember Nichols, second. Councilmember McConaughey, discussion of the motion? That's all.
Quick clarification, so it was minus all of the impact fees for now?
The impact fee changes.
Okay, perfect. Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hega?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
No.
The vote passes five to in favor.
Would you session? You have a comment on that?
Yes, please.
Just a comment, thank you, Mayor, just with that, my intent with that would be, let's talk about the impact fees, let's just not, 'cause with, with what you said, we need to talk about that. Let's talk more, I just wasn't aware of that part, and I'm not ready to move forward as it's not an impact fee. Thank you.
Councilmember Hega?
So, um, David, again, let me go, is it, is a document that we're approving, we've already, the, the impact fees, I'm, 'cause I abstained last night, were already approved, am I right or wrong? And we're just a- approving a schedule of fees?
That is correct, that happened clear back in, when I first arrived, and I don't remember the month, it was June, or, I can't tell you the dates now.
For the utility fees?
My, if I, I'm trying to remember accurately, I'd probably need to go back in a few minutes and verify what exactly. 'Cause you were parceling out at the previous efforts to do the same thing.
My understanding, Mr. Bricky, is that until an official uniform fee schedule is adopted by the council, no fees can be assessed.
That part is accurate.
They can talk about it.
They can talk about them, but until the fee that's presented...
But it's adopted now?
Yes, minus the impact fees.
So does that mean we can't collect any impact fees until that's voted on?
The changes to impact fees, they just...
No, changed impact fees, okay.
They'll stay as they are.
Gotcha.
So with, 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 with modified all the other fees, except impact fees, which remain as they are, it's not like, uh, whatever solid city's going through with their...
Uh, we had a closed session scheduled with the hour, um, I don't know that anybody's in a position to want to discuss it, we need to discuss, um... We'll postpone that until the 11th.
Is there, is there anything that staff need to talk about?
Uh, David, did you have something that you had to do tonight, or can I wait till 11th?
I have some litigation updates, if you wanted some updates on some of our trials and, uh, for, um, litigation issues, but that can certainly wait till the next year. I think you all know, there's one in case in particular that I just wanted to update you.
A motion, second? On the second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.